has churned, tenants have gotten burned. And at the same time, I think we've had it presented very clearly from the landlord community that there is concern, understandable concern in the Los Angeles economy that this council not act in a way that could have unpredictable, unforeseen, and unfortunate economic consequences. Because after all, we are dealing with a situation where, as I know Mr. Wesson will remember, as Ms. Gruel will remember, as Mr. Reyes will remember, from a hearing that we had in Council District Two at Valley College, we had a presentation from a UCLA professor, an economist, and he made very clear to us that we are in a cycle. This is a cyclical thing in the economy. Here's where it started, here's how it may end, but there's no way of predicting how long the cycle lasts and what will happen next. And his advice was to us, act cautiously when you're dealing with this type of situation. I think, colleagues, what Mr. Wesson has endeavored to do is draw a line of balance. That is how I perceive his proposal in its entirety. It is an effort to try to come up with a balance, with a reasoned solution that does not give either side everything it wants, but tries to act in a way that immediately or as quickly as possible provides tenants with enhanced relocation assistance, and at the same time does not do anything that would have an unforeseen or unfortunate effect, or certainly unintended effect, on the local economy. It may not be a perfect solution, and I have heard him say more times than I've ever heard anyone say that he will be the first among us to repeal any aspect of it after a very short period of time if it is shown to be a bad idea, or if the facts on the ground bear that out.
Saying this is a very serious matter. District Six Councilmember Tony Cardenas agrees this is not a perfect solution and probably will not be the final answer.
What you're watching here is sausage in the making. If you've ever watched sausage being made, you probably would never eat it again. It's not pretty. It's not pretty, but it's something that is part of what happens. What Councilmember Wesson has done, and I want to thank him for doing this, he has taken an issue at the level of the electeds in the city of Los Angeles, not appointed officials, not bureaucrats, but the electeds, and said, "We need to craft a solution." And he admitted, he has admitted that this solution is not perfect. He has also admitted and committed that over the coming months and over the next year, we will very likely hear more from the public, we will make changes, and we will have something different that was being contemplated for approval today. And with all due respect to the Appointed Planning Commission, this is the constitutional United States democratic system in which this should be decided. Because we, as elected officials, however we vote, are going to be talked about badly either with renters and/or property owners, developers, no matter what, no matter what. People are going to try to tarnish who we are as elected officials. This is a very serious matter, and I agree with everyone that this is not a perfect solution, but I commend my colleague Herb Wesson, who has already let us know, this is 99.9% chance that this is not the final solution. But people are being evicted as we speak today. People are getting their notices as we speak today, and there are some people who deserve more compensation than what we have today, so that's why I am willing to vote for this today, because I'm not getting evicted today, but someone, citizen or not, senior or disabled, single with children, is getting evicted today, and they deserve better than what the city of Los Angeles has today, and they deserve better. They also deserve better than what we are actually, hopefully, going to approve today or next week. They do deserve better. But the only way that we're going to get there is if we force ourselves to reckon with this in a timely manner, because this has been talked about for decades. And I can promise you this, this will have a much more final and better solution in the next 12 months.
All right. Any other questions, colleagues? As amended, we have this before us. Please open the roll.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm sorry, just for clarification, council's voting on all of those six, six A, six B, and then nineteen and nineteen A is amended.
Correct. The entire package. Okay? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. And we'll send that forth, if there's no objection, we'll send that forthwith to the mayor.
As you saw, the new relocation fees received unanimous support from council members, which means it'll take effect immediately with the expected signature of the mayor. Now, the ordinance will provide $6,810 to tenants who have lived in their apartments less than three years, or $14,850 for those older, disabled, or with minor children. $9,040 to tenants who have lived in their apartments more than three years, or $17,080 for those older, disabled, or with minor children. $9,040 to tenants whose income is 80% of the area's median income or less. Median income in this area for a family of four would be $55,450. And $17,080 for those older, disabled, or with minor children. This means testing will be discontinued July 1st, 2008, if council chooses not to extend it. There would also be fees of up to $2,300 per unit, which developers and owners would have to pay to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Continue to watch Council Week in Review for updates on hall housing issues that come through your Los Angeles City Council. Council Week in Review is seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at 213-473-3978. And if you'd like to obtain a copy of an audio or videotape of a council or committee meeting, your request may be made in person at Room 395 in City Hall, or by calling 213-978-1046. Or, of course, by dialing 311, your one call to City Hall. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 13th, 2007. On behalf of Tony Agani and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Pobjoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Moving is who we are, inside and out. We breathe in so that we can breathe out, so that we can breathe in again. We dream, awake and asleep. We laugh. We talk with our hands. We give it a whirl. We become. We move our bodies and minds in constant conversation. And no matter how much we do it, it's never enough. We know this to the core, that as long as we are breathing, there is moving to be done. Multiple sclerosis stops people from moving. People with MS understand something about moving that is hard for most of us to comprehend, that moving is not a guarantee.
MS is a disease that damages myelin, the protective tissue that surrounds the nerve fibers of the brain and spinal cord. When a person has MS, myelin is lost, and that leaves behind scar tissue called sclerosis.
The scar tissue disrupts the electrical impulses that move information from the brain to the body and makes movement difficult.
No one knows what causes MS, and there is no cure. The effects of MS are unpredictable and show up in different ways in different people. One person may experience memory loss and fatigue, while another may suddenly lose the ability to see.
Someone might lose their balance and have trouble walking, while another may have slurred speech and tremors.
For some, the symptoms of MS come and go; in others, they last forever.
The National Multiple Sclerosis Society is a collective of passionate individuals united by a common goal, to address the challenges of each person whose life is affected by MS. something you can or can't do, but rather is who you are, that if you are alive, you are connected to the potential, the hope, the momentum of it all. You move along with, because of, and in spite of, the great big turning world.
Your city, your channel.
There's here. Thank you for being here, absolutely, along with Mr. Labange and Mr. Zine, but also Mr. Rosendahl, if you would join us, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Weiss, and we'll begin our meeting in about two minutes' time, so thank you for your patience. Very good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Friday, April 20th, 2007. I want to welcome our guests that are here in John Farrar Memorial Council Chambers in Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m., except for the first Friday of the month in which we meet at our Van Nuys City Hall. We welcome members of the public to join us at these meetings here in City Hall at 10 a.m. on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Friday. And we also invite people to watch us on Channel 35, where we are broadcast live and rebroadcast in the evening, and we want to welcome all of our viewers for Channel 35, L.A. City View. We are also available online through our city's homepage. If you're close to a computer, you can navigate to www.lacity.org and click on the link to watch live streaming webcast of our council meetings. Finally, if you're not close to a television or a computer, you can always use your telephone to listen in to the proceedings of the full council or any of our committees through a service we have called Council Phone. That number is 213-621-CITY. Again, 213-621-CITY, and you can listen to our proceedings via your telephone. The agendas for the meetings are available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. Those are available also online at www.lacity.org, or you can come to the city clerk's office or here in council chambers and get a city council agenda. You'll notice on the agenda that most items are divided into items that have noticed for public hearings and ones that a public hearing has already been held. Every item the city council considers is available for public comment. If that's already happened in committee, we don't do that here in city council unless somebody motions to reopen the hearing. If we have not done it in committee, though, and you would like to be heard here in city council, please fill out a speaker card in the back with your name and give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll make sure that you are heard. Finally, we have general public comment for items that are not on the agenda but are nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city council, and general public comment can be given here or in Van Nuys City Hall, where we are able to watch you during our meetings here via teleconferencing. I want to thank the members of the city council that are here, pursuing to council rules on time, councilmembers Gruel, Hahn, Wezar, Labange, Parks, and Zine. Councilmembers Alorcon, Perry, Reyes, and Wesson are excused today, either for health reasons or for official city business. We expect Mr. Cardenas to arrive at 11:30. That leaves us a couple council members we'd like to ask to join us, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss, if you will join us as soon as possible. We begin each Friday with presentations to notable members of the community, heroes and other people that either work for the city or are part of Los Angeles or have touched our city in significant ways. And with that, I'd like to begin those presentations while we are awaiting the full quorum to begin our meeting officially, and I'd like to start our presentations today by recognizing the council member from the Eighth District, Bernard Parks, who will be giving us a special presentation, and get your questions ready. Mr. Who is Bernard Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are very pleased today to have a monument and a legend in our community here today, and there are several reasons that we're honoring him, and we'll get into that, but first of all, as Eric started off, he's probably asked more questions on television than all the news reporters combined. And he's a native of Ontario, Canada, graduated from the University of Ottawa with a degree in philosophy. He had an interest in broadcasting, and his career caused him to join the Canadian Broadcasting Company, which is Canada's premier network. He specialized in national news, covered a wide range of special events for CBS Radio and Television, earning the reputation as a broadcaster, maintained his poise and composure in the most difficult setting. He was first identified or noticed by American viewers when he hosted a game show called Wizard of Oz. After other hosting roles, he was chosen to be the longtime host of Jeopardy. Mr. Trebek has embarked upon his 23 years on that show. He remains impressed with the series of fast-paced nature for the contestants and the sophisticated level of knowledge. In conjunction with the USO, he's visited military bases around the world and auditioned prospects of participants. Since 87, he's done more than 10 USO tours. He's also been recognized by many groups and has won the Bob Hope Entertainment Award in 1998. Jeopardy and its clue crew has continued to demonstrate its dedication to education with Classroom Jeopardy in various communities. The reason, in addition to Mr. Trebek's longtime support of educational endeavors, is 23 years of hosting the Jeopardy show, and also the fact that he has contributed to numerous charities, the Worldwide Vision and United Services Organization. He's also won four Daytime Emmys as the outstanding show host. But today, we're honoring him because he's coming right into the community, and he is putting on the 2007 Jeopardy College Championship at USC, a small school in the Eighth District. Now, Tom, you applauded so loud, they didn't hear it. A small school, USC, a small school in the Eighth District. Now, you can applaud. They will be holding this event at the Galen Center on April 21st, April 21st and 22nd, and the winning, the winners of this competition will win a grand prize of $100,000. And we wanted to bring Mr. Trebek here because... And we wanted to bring Mr. Trebek here because he has been a person that people have grown up with on television. He's been a person that, to quietly, have been a part of so many programs of honoring troops at the USO, charities, but really driving home the issue of education, and also the fact that he is using the backdrop of the USC facility to have the 2007 championship. Let me give you this certificate today in honor of the Los Angeles City Council. I'm going to give you this and say thank you for your service.
And while you're taking pictures, we have, Councilmember Gruel would like to add her good wishes as well. Councilmember Gruel?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I just wanted to add my congratulations to yours, Mr. Parks. Alex Trebek lives in my district, and he is an active individual, has donated land and is somebody who is very, very supportive of the community, not only what you've talked about today, but consistently has had a hand in improving the neighborhood. And so, I remember meeting him at a community meeting. He was quietly sitting in the audience, but was someone who spoke out about some things happening in his neighborhood. But I just want to say thank you, Alex, for all that you do in this city, and we're proud to have you as part of our city family and to be recognized today for your accomplishments. Thank you very, very much.
And we also have Mr. Labange who would like to add his good wishes.
Thank you very much.
He's kind of our trivia master here.
No, 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 Mr. President. But Madam City Clerk, for $1,000, check the records. Whose district does Alex Trebek live in? Please. I think it's the 4th District, but we'll have him check that just the same there. We'll check it out here, we'll go back through a commercial.
I think this is going to have to go to final Jeopardy.
But the greatness is that this is a man who inspires us all. His program, Jeopardy, is so important. I know, Eric, you make a little fun of me and members when I talk about the city's history, but it is very important to know our history, to see where we are today, because you never should forget history, we know that, wherever it is, but especially Los Angeles history. And Alex Trebek and his team are going to the Galen Center at USC, one of the greatest universities in the country, to have this college bowl, which is so important. And I'm just proud of you. I love watching the show. When I'm home, I learn so much about the world because of your show, which is so important. And I also want to personally thank you, among the many things, Mr. Parks, that you cited, is in addition to a great contribution this family has given to the Santa Monica Mountains Open Space, which I would just want to recognize. So, let's have another hand for the great Alex Trebek.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. And one final note of trivia, I want to welcome you here as well from the President's Chair, and I think you recently had a city employee on your show, an employee of our Council District Office, Josh Kamensky, my Communications Director. He has kept to the Jeopardy requirement and has not told any of us whether he won or lost, but we know that he was very excited to be there, and I hope that he represented the city well. So, with that, welcome and congratulations. We'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilman Parks. It's a great honor for me to be here today in this historic venue and to be in the company of you, ladies and gentlemen, and to renew my acquaintance with Wendy and Tom. It's amazing, but as I look around, I look at all the names of the council members, and I see at least five names that are going to be on the ballot for mayor in the not-too-distant future. So, it's going to be very interesting for me to see how things play out. I'd be lying to you, I'm not going to tell you which five. Sorry, Dennis. I'd be lying to you if I were to say that when we were preparing Jeopardy for broadcast 24 years ago, we were pretty sure that we were putting together a quality program that would emphasize learning and knowledge and the value of a good education. We were just putting together a television program that we hoped would last at least beyond its first season and would make money for our owners. At that time, that was Merv Griffin. And would provide us with gainful employment for at least one or two seasons. Now, here we are, 23 years later, and we have achieved most of our goals. A funny thing happened on the way to this point, and that is that after a few years, Jeopardy really became part of Americana, and we were recognized as a quality television program, one that did feature the higher aspects of education and learning. I used to comment that I'd do a takeoff on the old commercial. Our contestants make money the old-fashioned way. They earn it. They demonstrate how valuable it is to have a good education. It's interesting that Councilmember Parks invited me here today because we are doing, as he mentioned, our college championship at USC tomorrow and Sunday. USC, as we all know, is known nationwide for its football team, and in the last couple of years, for its basketball team, and for a lot of its other athletic activities. But many people here in Southern California know full well that USC is one of the acknowledged academic leaders in the country, and it's appropriate, therefore, that we should be doing our college championship there. I would point out, for those of you who are not USC alums, that in our college championship tomorrow and Sunday, there are five California Centers of Higher Learning represented. UCLA, a natural rivalry. We've got Berkeley, UC San Diego and Stanford. We had a young girl from Stanford win a tournament a few years back, and our first prize at that time was $50,000. And I looked into the audience and I saw her father, and I said, "Hey, Dad, isn't this good news? That's going to pay for two years of tuition at Stanford." And he jumped up immediately, waved his hands like this and said, "No, one." So, the cost of education has gone up. But education is a serious, serious affair in our country. Most Americans today, I believe, are better educated than they were 40 or 50 years ago. But in many areas in higher learning, we have been surpassed by other countries. They've caught up and they have gotten ahead of us. So, it's very important for you people here in our City Council Chambers to do as much as you can to help improve the educational opportunities in our city and throughout Southern California. We are honored, I speak now on behalf of all of us at Jeopardy. We're a lot like the City Council. We're not a one-man show. We're a collaboration. We're a group of people, producers, production personnel, writers, contestant coordinators and distributors, who work with one goal in mind, and that is to make our show the best it can possibly be, to get education across to our viewers in an entertaining way. And that's going to be our goal again tomorrow for the college championship and again on Sunday. Any of you who would like to attend, by all means, come down to the Galen Center. It has a great seating capacity, and with the rain, that might deter some of the people who already have tickets, but I'm sure we could accommodate you. And you will see something that will impress you as it has me over the years, and that is you will be looking at the future of your country through these young people. These are college students who will demonstrate not only great knowledge, but a good sense of humor and a good sense of themselves, and all of the best qualities that we like to associate with our country. You will not be disappointed, believe me. So, Councilman Parks, thank you again for this honor, and to all of you, my thanks and my appreciation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks, for that presentation. Our next presentation will be led by a council member from the 3rd District, Councilmember Dennis Zine.
If I can have Councilmember Bill Rosendahl also join me, who represents the area where the Assembly Member is elected by the people to serve the people, and we're going to honor Assemblymember Ted Lieu from Torrance, California. Ted and I served on Independent Cities Association when he was a councilman. I remember when you were first running for office, and how many years ago was that?
About five.
About five years ago. So, you've gone from local politics to state politics. January edition of Western City Magazine, "The League of California Cities Named Assemblymember Ted Lieu as One of Ten Legislators Who Supported Local Government in 2006." What's interesting, Ted, a former Torrance City Councilman, was the only Los Angeles County legislator to make the list, the only one in L.A. County to make this list. Represents parts of the city of Los Angeles, including Westchester, Playa del Rey, Venice and West Los Angeles, which is represented also by my colleague, Bill Rosendahl. In naming Ted Lieu as one of the 10, the League cited strong stance in favor of local control, his willingness to work with the League of California Cities on legislation that affects cities. And obviously, you got your foundation from being a council member in Torrance. Specifically noted that Ted had opposed legislation that would have forced local cities to have more group homes. And he is known by the League of California Cities for his promotion of green buildings. Now, that doesn't mean painted green. Some people wonder what that means. That means greening the environment. Representatives of the Los Angeles City have worked closely with you on issues of local importance ranging from saving the Los Angeles Air Force Base to the future of Los Angeles International Airport, as well as issues on representation of local cities on the South Coast Air Quality Management District Board. You're also a strong supporter of the Independent Cities Association, where we serve together, which we are a member city, and I am the president of that Independent Cities Association. And it's with great pleasure that we have a resolution recognizing you, Ted, as being named the Western City Magazine only one in our jurisdiction of the 10. You're the one from us, the one with the heart and soul for Southern California, and we have a resolution. And before I present that to my colleague, who represents the area that overlaps your area, Councilmember Bill Rosendahl.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it very much. And, Mr. President, colleagues, as we all know, as members of a city council, we need to work with the other levels of government, the Assembly, the Senate, the House of Representatives, the Governor's Office, the congressional offices, we're all joined together. And I got to tell you, since I got elected and he got elected, the partnership with us has been extraordinary. It's been fabulous for our constituents. We work together on every issue. In fact, on Monday, I flew up to Sacramento, walked into Ted's office with a beautiful picture of his two kids and his wife, and we talked a little bit about an issue that he has put before the Assembly, which is the Green Line going into LAX, a no-brainer. 15 years ago, they stopped it, for whatever the reason is. I never got a straight answer. But with the leadership of Ted Lieu, we're going to create an authority, and we're going to make it happen, we're going to work it out with MTA so everybody can join hands and believe in getting a stub into the airport as Phase One. He invited me before the Transportation Committee in Sacramento, and it was an amazing experience to see Republicans and Democrats seeing it as we do, as a no-brainer. They unanimously approved it out of the committee with one abstention so they can talk about it in other committee meetings. But that's a true sign of a true leader, is what he has done on the Green Line. Tomorrow, Ted and I are going to be in a demonstration from noon to 2:00 at the Santa Monica Airport, where their jets in the last 10 years have dramatically increased to 10,000 takeoffs and 10,000 landings a year. And in that context, the toxicity is pouring into our neighborhoods. It is a serious health issue. So, Ted and I, among others, will be in a demonstration supporting the local people that those jets should be moved to Van Nuys or to LAX or some other mechanism to make it work. So, those two issues, we're joined at the hip. We're also joined on all of the other issues in Westchester, in Venice, in West LA, and we're working together on the modernization of LAX and all of that issues besides the Green Line, which we will get down into the South Bay as well. So, it is an honor for me to be part of our council honoring a great new legislature, who has made a huge difference so far for the benefit of all of us. Just want to congratulate you so much for your-
Very nice, Mr. Rosendahl. I got to call on Mr. Smith, please.
I just want to join with my colleagues, Bill Rosendahl and Dennis Zine, in congratulating Ted Lieu. Last year, right after Ted was elected, I think it was maybe a month or so after he was in office, I went to Sacramento on some legislation that was very important to the city of L.A. and how we deal with our trash. And Bill Rosendahl said, "Go see Ted Lieu. He's a good guy, you'll like him, it'll be a great meeting." I met with Ted, he was gracious to take my meeting on last-minute notice, talked about the bill, said what was important to the city of L.A., and he went into the committee meeting against the chairman's wishes and supported the city of L.A., supported our position, and was just a really fine gentleman. I would just want to say, in that meeting, you were very gracious, really, you're just a cool guy.
Yes.
Just a nice guy, was willing to work with us. Now, we've got a couple of bills in the legislature that are doing some of the things we want done with our trash. Ted authored those bills. We've worked with his office to get the language just right, and he's been very gracious in working with the city of L.A. and all these things. And now, what you're doing on the Green Line certainly is very futuristic, thinking the right way. You've been a great partner in the very, very short time you've been there, and it's just been a dream work with you. Assemblymember Lieu, congratulations on your selection there. And for all of you who haven't worked with him yet, he's a really good man to work with. He's very, very amenable to all the things you want to talk about, and having served in government, he understands what we go through, and is a strong voice for Los Angeles and Sacramento. So, thank you for your commitment, thank you for all your service and working with us.
Very nice words, Mr. Smith. And I'd like to call on Mr. Garcetti, our President of Council.
Thank you very much. And Ted, it's wonderful to have you here and to be honored. You're no stranger to these hallways and to this chamber, but I want to thank my colleagues, Mr. Zine, Mr. Rosendahl. You embody to me what public service is about, not just in your professional work, but also what you do on the side, your military service, the way that you've stepped up and said that you will serve in terms of our nation's defense, but also your progressive ideals in terms of looking at green building, which I know we're very excited to work with you to make sure that our construction is done in an environmentally sensitive way. But more than that, your friendship, just personally. I can't think of a better person to be honored. We're really pleased, you make all of us proud when something like that happens. And as we've been saying, even though it's, you know, still technically in your first kind of term, I know you've been re-elected once, but your first term, you've already shown yourself to be an extraordinary public servant for the entire state, not just for the district you represent, but for all Californians, and we expect great things in the years to come, and we look forward to doing them together. Congratulations.
Mr. Garcetti touched on it, Ted's also active in the United States Air Force Reserve. So, like Counsel President Garcetti is currently going through the Naval Reserve Training to serve his country, that's what Ted has been doing. So, the beautiful picture of your children, your wife, in addition to that, protecting the people of the United States in your military service. So, Ted, it's now, you're no stranger to microphones. Your turn.
Well, I thank you, Councilmembers, Zine, for presenting this resolution, and for Councilmember Rosendahl and Councilmember Smith and President Garcetti for your kind words. I do note that, you know, when I present resolutions from the state, it's about half this size, so I think you all have just a lot more money than we do up there at the state. But otherwise, you remind me of the State Assembly, you know, we never start on time, we have problems getting quorum, and people are excused for random reasons. But it's my pleasure to stand here and to receive this. I came from local government as well, so protecting local government is of vital importance to me. Last year, I had a very strong voting record in protecting local government. I carried bills that were supported by the city of Los Angeles, and when the city of L.A. takes a position, it's very important to me, whether it's for or against, and I will seriously consider that when I vote. And this year, again, I'm carrying legislation that I know is going to be supported by the city of Los Angeles. I look forward to working with all of you, and since I have some of you here, I'm not going to waste this opportunity to just lobby you a little bit on some of the things I'm doing. I think it is about time that we get the Green Line into LAX, and I'm working with Councilmember Rosendahl and many of you to do that. I know President Garcetti came up and we talked about green buildings. I've introduced a bill, AB 888, that will mandate by 2012, all new commercial buildings must meet the LEED's gold standard for green buildings, and so hopefully we can get that through. And then, I've got a package of bills to help the underserved minorities. I've got a banking development district bill, I'm chair of the Banking Committee, that's going to incentivize banks and credit unions to locate in underserved areas. Look forward to your support on it, and I know the mayor has a very big plan in terms of getting banks in more areas that are not served well. So, thank you very much for honoring me here. I look forward to working with you to help L.A. meet all its interests up there in Sacramento, and feel free to call me at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Assemblymember. Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Zine, Mr. Rosendahl, thank you. I'd like to call on Mr. Garcetti, please.
And Ms. Gruel is going to be joining me as well, and I know the mayor is expected any moment, he is on his way. I'd like to ask some of our guests to join us as well here. It's my pleasure with the mayor and this entire City Council to welcome the pillars of the Armenian-American community here in Los Angeles today for very sober recognition, one which we unfortunately still continue to do each year in the face of many untruths around the world about the 92nd anniversary of the-
around the world about the 92nd anniversary of Armenian genocide, which resulted in the extermination of one-half of the entire world Armenian population. We ask ourselves each year, why do we have to continue to do this? Imagine for a moment, if you're Jewish in this room, and if Germany was denying that the Holocaust ever happened in the face of all the evidence to the contrary. Imagine if you were a Tutsi who was facing Hutus, who said that no Tutsi had been killed in Rwanda in the 90s. Imagine if we tried to wipe off not just the map of people, but the very history of that attempt. It is why we are here again, to make sure in as loud a voice as we can find with people throughout this world, that we do not only remember and recognize and commemorate what happened 92 years ago in the ancestral homelands of the Armenian people, where they had lived for 3,000 years. A community that was targeted not because they were different, but because they worshipped God in a different way. A people who were targeted not because they were outsiders, but because precisely they were at home. And that unfortunately, a genocide that became the blueprint for subsequent holocausts, including the Jewish Holocaust of the 20th century. We also stand here today with the key members of the community, the Armenian-American community, the intellectual, political, and religious leaders that form Los Angeles' Armenian community, because those were the first who were targeted in the genocide as well. The murder of all able-bodied men, the leaders of the community, and then the deportation of the remaining women and children under such conditions to assure their death by starvation and sickness, a pattern that has been repeated time and time again all over in the Holocaust in Rwanda, in Southern Sudan, and other genocides. The Armenian genocide was conceived of and carried out by Ottoman Turkey from 1915 to 1923, resulting in the deportation of nearly 2 million Armenians, of whom 1.5 million men, women, and children were killed. 500,000 survivors expelled from their homes. And it's documented with overwhelming evidence in the National Archives of Austria, France, Germany, Great Britain, Russia, Turkey, the United States, the Vatican, and many other countries. And this vast body of evidence attests to the same facts, the same events, and the same consequences. Then-U.S. Ambassador Henry Morgenthau organized and led protests by officials of many countries. And in fact, it is one of the both sad and brave moments of this country's history that the Armenian genocide became a very important cause here for what was then a nascent human rights struggle. And as the mayor and councilmember and President Protem Wendy Gruel join us here today, we know that the allies that were of the Ottoman Empire, that many people had blood on their hands in the campaign of race extermination, as it was termed by our own Department of State at the time. Raphael Lemkin, who coined the term genocide in 1944 and who was the earliest proponent of the Genocide Convention, invoked the Armenian case as a definitive example of genocide in the 20th century. Indeed, it was Hitler himself who said, "After all, who remembers the Armenians?" before he began the Holocaust. And it was in December 11, 1946, that the United Nations adopted the first resolution, United Nations General Assembly Resolution 96-1, which was the Genocide Convention. The legacy, the history, and indeed, what our mission is today of the Armenian genocide is to make sure that there are no untruths stated on the face of this earth, and that we bring truth to power today in realizing that the 1.5 million souls who were lost continue to live through each of us here today. I want to pass the microphone over. I also, before that, want to welcome a lot of young people who are here, who I'd ask to stand, from the AGBU School in Canoga Park, Alex Palibos School in the heart of Hollywood, and Arshak de Kranian School. Please stand and be recognized, and we want to thank you. You are the vanguard and the next generation of truth-tellers, and we, as a city, are alongside with you. We'll be hearing from the Consul General of Armenia and some of our religious leaders in a moment, but I'd like to present a great friend to the Armenian community and somebody who, when he was in the state legislature, always ensured that they stated very clearly that this did happen and recognized it, our great leader and the mayor of this city, Antonio Villarosa.
Thank you, Council President Garcetti. Thank you for always standing with the Armenian community on every issue, but particularly on the issue of the Armenian genocide. Just a few short days ago, we participated in Yom Oshoah, which is the Day of Remembrance of the Holocaust. And today, this Sunday, last Sunday, at Pan Pacific Park, the day was commemorated not just to the Holocaust, but also to the Armenian genocide, the genocide in Rwanda, in Darfur, in Cambodia, in the Balkans. And it was fitting that Yom Oshoah Remembrance Day included those genocides, because as we all know, it was the Armenian genocide that began what has been human history's most deadly century, the 20th century. It is fitting that we're here today, because earlier this year, a courageous and honorable man was brutally assassinated in broad daylight. Harant Dink, the editor of the only bilingual Armenian-Turkish newspaper in the world, had the audacity to speak openly and truthfully about the Armenian genocide, a crime in which 1.5 million Armenians were murdered, where women were raped, entire populations deported, where the men of the country were conscripted into the service of the Ottoman Army and executed by their own commanders, where people were worked to death, where women and children and the elderly were marched to death and starved. Harant spoke about these crimes by stating the obvious, what we all know. He used the word genocide, and for this word, he was killed. They wanted to silence him. They wanted to make an example of him and discourage others from speaking openly. Council President Garcetti mentioned the young truth-tellers. It is important that the truth-tellers, the next generation of truth-tellers, are here with us today. Because make no mistake about it, this assassination is a continuation of the genocide of 1915. It is an attempt to instill fear and apprehension in the hearts of all those who treasure freedom and truth. These atrocities occurred 91 years ago, and still we're fighting for the first condition of justice. First condition of justice is the recognition of the gravity of the evil done. Angelinos, we not only need to remember on this day, we need to harness the energy in this room here today. We need to employ every ounce of pride here. We need to remember the events of the Armenian genocide by remembering the assassination of Harant Dink. I'm proud to be mayor of a city that's home to America's largest population of Armenians outside of Armenia. And that is why I sent a letter to Speaker Nancy Pelosi, asking her to bring a full vote as soon as possible on House Resolution 106, which- Which, as you know, officially recognizes the U.S. government on record as recognizing the Armenian genocide. Now, we all know that the city of Los Angeles has been on record for years about the Armenian genocide, and it's about time the federal government did the same. I thank Council President Garcetti for inviting me here today. I'm always heartened to be here with my colleagues on the council. And I say to you, let Los Angeles lead the way. Los Angeles, the most diverse city anywhere in the United States and maybe anywhere in the world. The portal to the south, the gateway to the east, the city that is the city of America's hope and promise. It should be here, where we bring the light to the Armenian genocide, where we stand up with our Armenian brothers and sisters to say, "Never again." Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Villarosa and President Eric Garcetti. Eric has led the way on the city council since he was elected. For this council to go on record acknowledging the Armenian genocide and that recognition. And we will continue to do so, although we hope that this year, we will be successful in the Congress for them to adopt that resolution, so that we can proudly say the United States of America, not only Los Angeles and other cities across the country, have stood up to recognize the atrocities that occurred in 1915. And it's important that the world recognize that and will continue to lead those efforts here in Los Angeles to get them to recognize. And as the mayor stated last Sunday, we were at Pan Pacific Park, and Dennis Zine and I were at another event in the afternoon, where Holocaust survivors were telling young people, and young people were responding to their stories. And you talk about the truth-tellers and the stories and how important it is for us to never forget. And what has impressed me, whether you are with the Jewish community or you're with the Armenian community, and now as we have the issue of Darfur, people standing up and saying, "We can make a difference as an individual. We can make a difference to say, 'Never again.'" And the Armenian community has coalesced, has been the truth-tellers, been the people who have made sure that Los Angeles never forgets and that the world never forgets. The Armenian community is an integral part of this diverse city. And Eric and I do have a little ongoing bet as to who has, represents more Armenians in the city of Los Angeles. I still think I have more. Yeah. There you go. The mayor says he does. You're right. You do, mayor. But it's a proud day that we have such a diverse Los Angeles and an Armenian community. And we are here today to recognize the 92nd anniversary of that genocide and to remind people that we must be vigilant, we must stand up for injustices, and we must support this Armenian community, and look forward to the passage, and to encourage Nancy Pelosi to vote on that. So thank you very much again, Mr. Garcetti, for your leadership on this issue.
I'd like to recognize next, a wonderful Consul General, not just for his country, but as part of the Consular Corps here. Armin Lloyan will speak on behalf of the people of Armenia. Please welcome Consul General.
Thank you, Council President. I am honored for having my first opportunity to speak before this distinguished council, which represents 4 million residents of this great city. Ironically, so many years after the first genocide of the 20th century, various international organizations, governments, parliaments, provinces, states, cities, and towns around the world continue to speak about the crime of genocide as of a real threat faced by the mankind today. Imagine we could have gathered today just for remembrance, to speak about the lessons already learned from the tragedies of the past, to show the world that this ultimate crime against humanity is uprooted, that this was a gross error of history, that this is a day of our common victory over the scourge of hate, that this is a day of repentance, absolution, transcendence, and forgiveness. Instead, today, we have gathered to witness the adoption of a resolution which condemns the impunity of this crime and calls for its wider recognition and acknowledgement. And this happened because those who should bear political responsibility for this inhuman crime continue their policy of denial. They continue to lurk behind a wall of silence. They continue to reject dialogue and open communication. International recognition of the Armenian genocide is not an end in itself. Our responsibility is, together with the rest of the world, to speak up against the past and future uses of genocide as a political tool by states. The continuing failure by Turkey to denounce the genocide of Armenians in the Ottoman Empire, and its refusal to establish good neighborly relations with Armenia, left us with no choice but to pursue justice within international community. However, we do not want these tragic events and our tragic past to dominate our present and the future. Instead, we want that our peoples have an opportunity to gain new experiences that would replace old, bad ones. My government and Armenians around the world want to live in peace and understanding with all nations and neighbors, including Turkey. We lost nearly 2 million of our men, women, children, and therefore, we have legitimate security concerns that we are trying to address bilaterally and multilaterally, through dialogue, through stronger contribution to international order and rule of law, through better protection of human rights around the world, education, and raising awareness about the crimes of genocide. And this full chamber today is another testimony that we are not alone in our quest for truth and justice. In conclusion, let me express my words of appreciation to Mayor Villarosa, Council President Eric Garcetti for their devotion to the Armenian cause, to the members of the Los Angeles City Council, and all friends of my nation for their understanding and support of our goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul General Armin Lloyan. And I know we're very pleased that Yervan is our newest sister city. And Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Zine would like to make comments as well. Mr. Rosendahl, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, I was up in the tower to be there to add my solidarity and support. We're all God's children, and we're all connected on this earth. Somebody gets hurt, we all get hurt. What happened in that moment 92 years ago is a hurt that the world is still suffering from. Of course, everybody should admit the tragedy and the outrageous abomination that took place to the Armenian people. There are 10 Armenian churches right here in Southern California with a quarter of a million people from the Armenian faith and history. Unfortunately, genocides continue. Virginia Tech earlier this week, a deranged kid just shot all kinds of people. That's a genocide. Or right now, in Darfur, where it continues. I've been there, to the Sudan. I was there in '74. The genocide was happening then. It continues. Iraq, two days ago, in Baghdad, over 200 people were killed. The ethnic battling and the United States' presence is also a questionable issue about genocide going on. And mayor, I am so proud of you being here, the importance of your leadership in this region, and highlighting it by your presence adds a lot of gravitas to this event that we shall never forget. And as the Jews go through the Holocaust, which was another one most recently, and we're all talking about that, we should tie all the genocides on earth. We're all God's children. We should love one another. And I thank you so much, Mr. Garcetti, for bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Labunc. I too offer my support. I was in the tower this morning, the Bradley Room, with representatives from the Armenian community of recognizing this. I know Sunday, and I mentioned this, that Sunday, many of us were at Pan Pacific Park on the Holocaust Memorial. And we hear about the Holocaust Memorial, the genocide that took place with the Armenian people has to be remembered and recognized, as well as the Holocaust. The memorial that we celebrate, the day that we celebrate, the day that we can finally say we're at peace in this world, will be a day for all of us to rejoice. And to the students at AGBU Manugian School, can I see you stand again? Let's see, the AGBU Manugian School. I represent that area. I go to your graduations. You are the future for the Armenian people. I know most of you speak the language. Most of you are familiar with the customs and the standards. Your parents are very proud of you. I'm very proud of AGBU and all that you've accomplished. And to the Armenian community, my heart goes out to you. Every year, we bring this recognition forward. Every year, our mayor is here. Every year, we don't forget, and we can't forget, and we need to remember that justice is part of the American tradition. God bless you all, and all you students get back in class. God bless you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Zine. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmembers Zine and Rosendahl as well, and thank you for being there. Thank you, Councilmember Zine and Rosendahl as well, and thank you for being there this morning. Next, from the Armenian Apostolic Church of America, Father Miran Aznikian will speak. We're also joined here by Assemblymember Paul Krikorian, a dear friend of all of ours here in this chamber, and Frank Zerunian, who's the Mayor Pro Tem of Rolling Hills Estates, Andrew Kazirian from the ANC, and also His Eminence Archbishop Hovnan Dederian will speak as well. But first, please welcome Father Aznikian.
On this solemn day, as we gather here in this city hall of Los Angeles, the great city of life and vibrant, life-giving center of justice, peace, love, and harmony among all communities in this area. From the ashes, from the death itself, as resurrection of our nation, we come here today to commemorate the 92nd anniversary of the Armenian genocide. And they can kill us. They can torture us. They can make us not to see the sun, but they can't kill our nature, our hope, our love, our ideas of life and love. May God bless you and God bless our memory of the genocide as well as all the genocides, all the martyrs of the centuries, Darfur, as well as the Holocaust, as well as all the victims of injustice. May God bless you all. Amen.
Assemblymember Paul Krikorian, who represents parts of Los Angeles and Glendale and Burbank and who is well-known and a great leader for Southern California as well as the state, please welcome the Honorable Paul Krikorian.
Good morning. As we gather here to appropriately commemorate the Armenian genocide, we'll speak often of the 1,500,000 men, women, and children who were killed. And it's easy sometimes to get lost in statistics like that. So I'd like to just mention to you today one person, Khachadur Nahigin, my great uncle, who immigrated to the United States in the 1880s and was attending the University of Michigan. And as he went along in his education, he made the decision to go back home to his hometown of Kharpert so that he could be a teacher, so that he could be a professor at the local college there, because he had no idea, no idea of what was coming. He had no idea that his people were about to become victimized by one of the greatest crimes in the history of mankind. He went back, became a leader in the community, and in July 1915 was murdered in the public square of his hometown, along with so many others. And I raise that one story because I'm reminded, when I was on the floor of the assembly just last week and was speaking with a Holocaust survivor, I'm reminded of her family's story because she escaped to China, but so many of the rest of the people in her family had no idea of what was coming. They stayed and they were all lost. It's important that we remember, as Dr. King taught us, that an injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. So today and every day, the Armenian cause is the world's cause. So I ask that all of you use this day, use this opportunity to rededicate ourselves to rejecting bigotry and racism and intolerance in all of its forms. Because if we don't, we are at great risk of forgetting the past and reliving it yet again. Thank you very much.
The Mayor Pro Tem of Rolling Hills Estates, who spoke very powerfully upstairs about his own family's connection too, as well to the genocide, Frank Zerunian, please welcome him.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and my colleagues on the LA City Council. It's my first time here. Greetings from the city of Rolling Hills Estates, very south Los Angeles, and greetings in particular to my dear friend Janis Han, who happens to be my neighbor in San Pedro. Thank you for the invitation. I stand before you as the great-grandson of a victim and a grandson of a survivor of the Armenian genocide. April 24th is very personal to me and to my family because, as Consul President Garcetti mentioned upstairs, the intelligentsia of the Armenian community were gathered and taken away, in particular, on April 24th, hence the commemoration of that date as the beginning of a grander event, of course, the entire extermination of my ancestors. I lost a great-grandfather that day because he was one of the leaders. He was an elected official. And I swore to my mother as I was growing up that one day, hopefully in a country where I was free to do what I could do, that I would serve out his term. This year, 2007, is the end of my first term in office. And while I'm delighted to have served, I am much more delighted in a greater sense that my great-grandfather lived through me to be able to serve out his term of office. Genocide is extremely personal to those of us who have seen it and in our families grew up with it. But genocide does not belong to Armenians. Genocide does not belong to Jews. Genocide does not belong to Rwandans or Darfurians. Genocide belongs to humanity. Hence, I commend your humanity because it is with this kind of a gesture you become humans that have the credibility to say "never again." Unfortunately, many get up and say "never again," but then again, the question is, do they have the moral authority or the credibility to say "never again"? You do, and thank you.
Andrew Kazirian from the Armenian National Committee is our next speaker. Please welcome Andrew Kazirian.
Distinguished City Council, distinguished mayor, distinguished City Council President Garcetti, on the occasion of the 92nd anniversary of the Armenian genocide, it is an honor for the Armenian community to share this commemoration with you. I've heard a lot from the previous orators regarding diversity, leadership, as a theme that is intertwined regarding genocide and its harms. That leadership has resonated deeply throughout the entire United States. Cities across the United States, including San Francisco and Dallas and others, have also issued proclamations similar to the ones we see here in the great city of Los Angeles. That leadership also resonates in other places as well. Two days ago, we learned that the United States Senate Majority Leader, Harry Reid, has agreed to cosponsor the Armenian genocide recognition resolution in the United States Senate. Going further, presidential candidate Senator Hillary Clinton in the United States Senate has also agreed to cosponsor the Armenian genocide resolution in the United States Senate. the leadership that has been provided by this city is greatly appreciated by the Armenian American community. The tragedy of genocide is not only that it is committed. The tragedy is that it is denied today. And the results that we see based on the leadership of the city of Los Angeles resonates very deeply with the entire United States. And we will work to further struggle against genocide denial, and we will work to ensure that resolutions are brought up in the United States Congress to recognize the tragedy and the harms and the catastrophic atrocities of the Armenian genocide and all genocides. We commend you on your leadership and thank you. It is an honor to be here today.
And thank you, colleagues, for allowing us the time for this presentation. Finally, His Eminence and our friend Archbishop Hovnan Dederian will say some concluding remarks. Thank you.
Honorable and dear mayor, Consul President Eric Garcetti, distinguished members of the council, dear guests, students, and future leaders, I would like to begin my words in extending homage to the innocent lives of the Virginia Tech atrocities which took and shook this nation. We pray for their departed souls and pray for their families and beloved ones. Dear distinguished guests, much could be said about the Armenian genocide perpetrated by the Ottoman Turks. Historical facts witnessing the victims of the Armenian genocide are well documented by the world-leading scholars and preserved in all international educational institutions, universities, and in countless libraries around the world. It is most comforting and spiritually uplifting to be recognized by governmental and civic offices and religious organizations as the sons and daughters of the victims of the Armenian genocide. Today's remembrance by the city of Los Angeles to honor the memory of those who perished in the Armenian genocide also extends tribute to the citizens of the United States of Armenian descent who have become an integral part of the American society. With 100 years of history, Americans of Armenian origin have proven to be loyal citizens of this freedom-loving land. Over the past many decades, political leaders and activists, ecumenical leaders and intellectuals have rendered a tremendous respect for the memory of the victims of the genocide. Amongst the many, the underdog Congressman Adam Schiff has repeatedly advocated for the recognition of the Armenian genocide. In his words, "So let us call genocide genocide. Let us not minimize the deliberate murder of one and a half million people. Let us have a moral victory that can shine as a light to all nations." Stanley Cohen, professor of criminology, Hebrew University, Jerusalem, has made a firm statement in support of the recognition of the victims of the Armenian genocide. In his own words, Professor Cohen says, "The nearest successful example in the modern era is the eight years of official denial by successive Turkish government of the 1915-17 genocide against the Armenians in which one and a half million people lost their lives. This denial has been sustained by deliberate propaganda, lying and cover-ups, forging documents, suppression of archives, and bribing scholars." Honorable mayor, President of the council, distinguished members of the city council, distinguished guests, it is truly gratifying to witness the commemoration of the memory of the victims of the Armenian genocide. This act alone challenges the society and our children to uphold firm in our hearts the legacy of the founders of this great nation who put their faith in God. Our faith in God needs to be reflected in a civilized life, in pursuance of higher education, with a deeper respect for the life of fellow citizens regardless of their cultural, religious, and ethnic background. May the Almighty God bless us all, keep us all united in our efforts to bring justice to the loss of the million-and-a-half souls, but above all, for the education of the younger generations to prevent intolerance, hatredness, and injustice in the life of the nations. Commemorations renew within ourselves a new sense of responsibility for humanity. In this sense, the words of Mahatma Gandhi convey to us all a special message. All humanity is one undivided and indivisible family, and each one of us is responsible for the misdeeds of all the others. I cannot detach myself from the wickedest soul. This year, among several public commemorative events of the Armenian genocide, we are touched by a series of memorial events organized by the Jewish World Watch and the Episcopal Church. Honorable mayor, Mr. President of the council, distinguished members of the council, and guests, through today's commemoration, we once again send out the message to the world that the Armenian nation refuses to die. May the Lord bless the memory of the victims of the Armenian genocide and strengthen us all in our calling and vocation to become the spiritual architects for a brighter future. Amen.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, and Ms. Grul, everyone.
And on behalf of the council, we now would like to present this to the people of Armenia through the Consul General, the 92nd anniversary of the Armenian genocide. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you again, colleagues, and thank you for allowing that to take some time, but some very important time. We very much do appreciate your understanding. I'd like to invite the Ethics Commission to come up for a second presentation. The Los Angeles City Ethics Commission, our very own Ethics Commission, who's been very patiently waiting as well, so thank you, was selected to receive the 2007 Public Integrity Award of the American Society for Public Administration, the ASPA. The award nomination cites the Ethics Commission's work to advance the public's respect and trust so that there can be fairness in the city's operations and transparency in the city's politics. The nomination further commends the Ethics Commission for managing to balance being an integral part of the municipal government while also holding officeholders, appointees, lobbyists, and city employees to a high standard of ethical behavior. As Chairman of the Rules and Elections Committee, which interacts directly with the Ethics Commission, I'm especially proud of this national honor for our local commission. The award you see is designed to provide a national forum through which the public sector's best and brightest can shine by identifying government that works well and government employees who work well. The award pays tribute to a local, state, or national or international organization that has made outstanding contributions to responsible conduct in public service. So essentially, the Ethics Commission was up against everybody, anywhere, for this award. Los Angeles City Council congratulates the Los Angeles City Ethics Commission on this well-deserved honor of receiving the ASPA's 2007 Public Integrity Award. And we know that this business is an imperfect one. It can be at times one which, for us as officeholders, touches us most directly, but one in which we continually strive to improve and to be an example, not just here in Los Angeles, but for the entire country. And I appreciate the commission's move to make sure that it is not only just ideals that we agree in, but working ideals that make sense. And I know the hard-working men and women of the commission staff, the commissioners, as well as our executive director, continue to not only live those ideals but try to make them workable for our city government as well. So congratulations, and it gives me great pleasure to award this to Lee Ann Pelham, our executive director, on behalf of the entire commission.
Thank you, council members and Consul President Garcetti. We at the Ethics Commission recognize that it's a bit of a difficult job to be both a part of the city's political culture while being apart from it. But this is a very meaningful day for us, not only because it recognizes the recognition of the hard work of the people standing behind me and the commissioners who couldn't be here today, but it also recognizes the strong leadership that the city itself has shown in the 16 years that the Ethics Commission has been here. It's meaningful that we were able to be awarded this by our peers across the country, but also importantly, it recognizes, I think, the shared but also importantly, it recognizes, I think, the shared ideals and the shared values that we have. In political culture, it's often easy to focus on differences, and we're very pleased to be here to accept this from you, recognizing that it acknowledges the shared things that we have in common, the shared commitment to public service, a commitment to excellence in public service, and also a shared determination to try and make the city a better place for everybody. So we very much appreciate the time this morning to acknowledge the Ethics Commission for this work, and we look forward to keeping forward direction and working with you in a very positive way to continue to make the city a better place. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pelham. Mr. Weezer and Mr. Rosenthal have comments.
Thank you very much, and I want to just congratulate you again. I know when I was in the school board, you were helpful to us in establishing the first several lobbyist registration system there. And now with Measure L, we're not only asking you to continue doing the great work for the city of Los Angeles, but now through our charter that allows us to look into what is happening at LSU, you're going to now provide work there. So thank you so much. This is well deserved, and when I became a council member this first year, you were first in line, one of the first departments that called me and said, "Do you need any help getting acquainted with the city? Need your staff trained?" You were very proactive in doing that. It shows that you are running a great operation there, and a very important one, because in order for us to do our jobs, in order for the public to feel confident that the city is functioning in a transparent, ethical manner, you're the ones that are doing your jobs and making that possible and interpreting sometimes some very difficult language to make that possible. So thank you for the work you do. I think this is a very well-deserved recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing us to speak. As you congratulate yourself, your real job has not been done, which is we need to get special interest money out of the political process. It strangulates it at every level. Federal government, we don't have health care for our people. Why? Because the insurance companies and the drug companies manipulate them. On the local level here, we need to get all that special interest money out. Eric Garcetti, Wendy Grul, and I and others on this council are for what we call clean money. We can get rid of that word. I just want to say, the people should pay for the government they get, and we should tax ourselves, be it three bucks or five bucks, and not let any other money come into the process so elected officials can truly make these decisions based purely on the merits. Though I will say my colleagues are honest and they have integrity, but the image that the public has of elected officials is that we're all on the take. I was a candidate just a couple of years ago, and when people found out I was running for office, they said, "A politician." They slammed the door. That is the attitude that a lot of our people have. We just had an election, and nobody showed up to vote because there wasn't much of a contest. So we look forward to your leadership in dealing with the money aspect of the political process and let the people take their full responsibility. You get the government that you pay for, and the people should take over that leadership and the tax base. And I thank you for getting this award as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Garcetti, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to call the councilman of the 14th Council District with the city of Los Angeles, Jose Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you for allowing us this time to recognize several of our well-deserved individuals who have protected our country and who deserve some recognition. And we're also here to announce that we are on a mission to gain sufficient funds to erect a long-overdue monument at El Pueblo, at the birthplace of the city of Los Angeles, to recognize the many fallen Latinos who received the Congressional Medal of Honor, particularly Mr. Obregón, who fought in the Korean War. It is an honor to be here today with these individuals who have been working on erecting this monument at El Pueblo for some time, including former councilmember Mr. Hernandez. Since September 16, 1993, Bill, who is with us here today, has worked tirelessly to erect a memorial honoring the 38 Hispanic Americans who have received the nation's highest military honor, the Congressional Medal of Honor. Additionally, we are here to announce that the Obregón Foundation is kicking off its major fundraising campaign to raise a monument at El Pueblo located in my district commemorating the Latino-American Medal of Honor recipients, including Eugene Obregón. Latinos have received more medals of honor than any other ethnic group in proportion to the numbers who have served in the military. To date, 38 Latinos have received the Congressional Medal of Honor, making them the largest single ethnic group to earn this prestigious award. On the forefront of these people and these heroes is Private First Class Eugene Obregón, who was from East Los Angeles and who served in the Korean War as an ammunition carrier of a machine gun squad in the Marine Rifle Company. On September 26, 1950, Mr. Obregón's squad was temporarily pinned down by hostile fire when he observed the fall of his fellow Marine, Private First Class Bert Johnson. Despite being armed with only a pistol, Private First Class Obregón unhesitatingly dashed from his covered position to the side of Private First Class Johnson. In this valiant effort to preserve the life of another, Mr. Obregón lost his life. Both soldiers were only 19 years old. The proposed Obregón Memorial will honor this brave act of courage and gallantly that exemplifies the loyalty and brotherhood which should exist among all Americans regardless of race and origin. You see, the life that Mr. Obregón saved was an angle. I am proud to present this resolution to Bill Lansford in support of his efforts to honor the bravery exhibited by Private First Class Eugene Obregón, other Hispanic-Latino Medal of Honor recipients, as well as demonstrating that we are here, hopefully, to erect this memorial at El Pueblo, the birthplace of Los Angeles, to recognize all people who have served in the military and protected our liberties and freedoms. Bill Lansford, thank you so much for your work. I today have committed and will support the efforts we're doing for fundraising for the memorial and have committed $10,000 of my discretionary funds and hope that we could go forward and erect this well-deserved memorial that is way long overdue. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Lansford.
Thank you. I really don't deserve anything, but I'm very proud to receive this award. I think it actually should go to all the gentlemen who are standing around me and the ladies. I'm not a very good speaker, so I made a few notes because I wish to thank Councilman Weezer, Commissioner Reese, and Mr. John Guerra, the city of Los Angeles, and the Southern California Gas Company for their generous support. I would also like to thank former Councilman Michael Hernandez for his help and guidance. He has been a steadfast friend to this monument from the very beginning. I also would like to thank Rudy Garcia and Alfred Lugo and all of the members of the 11th Airborne Honor Guard who are here today, who came to support us, as they always have supported us. And I would like to thank the hundreds of veterans who have supported the Obregón Foundation with money, their volunteer work, and their continuing faith. This support has not come only from Latinos, but from Anglos, African Americans, Asian Americans, Hispanic Americans. They have all joined to create this monument to the 40 Latino-American heroes who earned our country's highest award for their courage and sacrifice, over two-thirds of whom gave their lives while earning the medal. Ours has been a long effort, but we're getting there, and today begins our first major fundraising campaign. Some of the achievements of the foundation that I would like to point out to this assembly are the wholehearted support of our mayor, Villarogosa, of the city council, of the Cultural Affairs Commission, and the El Pueblo Commission. We now have a confirmed location in Father Sarah Park, a completed monument design, and all the building permits necessary to put the statue up. So we hope that by the end of this year, this year, we will begin building the statue so that our monument will stand as a symbol of courage, of hope, and of brotherhood for all the people of our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. One of the great veterans of Armed Forces, Mr. Rosenthal, wants to speak. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is the third time I'm up this morning. I apologize to people who don't want to hear me anymore, but I want to say this. I'm a veteran from the Vietnam era, and we shall never forget as well our veterans. And I want to thank my colleague, Jose Weezer, for focusing on this issue. Many of us from the Vietnam era, and I see one of my colleagues right in the back there, are homeless. In fact, we're told, I was in Washington two weeks ago, I met with Secretary Nicholson of Veterans Affairs and with his head of homeless issues, that there are 20,000 homeless vets in the Los Angeles greater area. And we have a veterans' property called The Campus, and there are three vacant buildings there that we want to see turn into permanent housing with supportive services for veterans. We go to war, and then we come back from war. And right now, there's a commission report about to come out, Donna Shalala and Senator Dole, in the end of June, that's going to talk about the Iraqi and the Afghanistan veteran. And frankly, they're not getting the services, the health services and the other services they should get. So every time I see a veterans' group, veterans, we're still fighting for our rights, we're still fighting for our values, and our government should be more supportive of veterans and veterans' needs. I salute you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Weezer.
Very much. With us also today is President of the Public Works Commission, Cynthia Ruiz, who's supporting this effort as well. Cynthia?
I just want to say congratulations to the group this morning. I've been a part of this project. I'm very proud to be a part of the project, and through our Office of Community Beautification grant, we were able to give a grant of $10,000 towards these efforts. And I just want to congratulate everybody and say I'm very proud to be a part of this very important project, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Jose Weezer for his leadership. Thank you.
Partner in this effort is John Guetta, the Senior Regional Affairs Manager for Southern California Gas Company, and also a Soligent High School graduate.
Former Boyle Heights resident, too. Anyway, the gas company is proud to play a part in this effort, albeit a small part, but we're very pleased that we're going to honor some very proud veterans that gave the ultimate sacrifice for their country, and hopefully by this memorial, other veterans will recognize that we will not forget. Thank you very much.
Finally, Rudy Garcia, the Color Guard Commander.
Mr. Rosenthal, I agree with you 100%. As the Los Angeles County Commissioner for Military and Veterans Affairs, I know exactly what you're talking about. I want somebody here, everybody here, to close their eyes for a minute and tell me what you see when I say the word veteran. Okay, I'm going to tell you. Veterans come from all over this country of ours. They come in all different sizes, they come in all different shapes, male and female. They come from all different ethnic backgrounds, and they come from all different religious backgrounds. God bless them, but they only come in three colors: red, white, and blue. If you've got a problem with that, get the hell out of Dodge. Thank you. I've got to say something. Excuse me, I've got to say something here. Noe, here we have World War II, Korea, Vietnam vets. Noe is a senior. He made the jump in the Philippines at a party with the 11th Airborne. So we kind of pick on Noe since he's a senior man, and we always tell him his first gig was for having rust on his musket.
Thank you very much. Today was not only a day to recognize and honor our veterans, but it also was a day to talk, to mention and highlight the fact that we are raising funds through the Obregón Foundation to put up the monument at El Pueblo. If anybody would want to support this or help out, please contact my office, and by all means, we hope to see you there when we erect this monument, recognizing our many veterans. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. I thank all the veterans. Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to call on the councilman of the 5th District, the Honorable Jack Weiss.
Just want to let everybody assemble here, but I'm very pleased to have the chance to honor someone who does not have rust on her musket. And I am, it's unfortunate that our friend and colleague Herb Wesson is out sick today because this presentation is as much from Herb Wesson and Council District 10 as it is from me. There has been an extraordinary partnership between my office and Herb Wesson's great office and Herb himself, and he very much wanted to be here and be a part of it, but I'm called in sick this morning, and there are a lot of you here, so I will, there is no way to stand in for him, but understand that this is all equally from him and on behalf of the residents of the 10th District. We're here honoring today Captain Aborn, Carol Aborn, but she's just known, she has two names to me, Captain Aborn. You are Captain Aborn, even though you are married to Sergeant Curry and your technical last name is Captain Curry. I think of her as Captain Aborn. I hope you don't mind. And I'm really glad, and Mr. Wesson is really glad, that you are the captain in our area because both of us together represent what is really, functionally speaking, it's a real fault line in our city, Robertson. And a lot happens, a lot comes together in the Robertson area, and it makes for a very vibrant and wonderful community, but as my friends who are community leaders know from time to time, it makes for real challenges for all of us. And behind me here today are so many of the great community leaders that we have in the South Robertson area. And we're coming together today for Captain Aborn, but we unfortunately had to come together last summer because of some shootings. And some of you probably will remember the very tragic case of Ana Anteriano and other shootings related to Hamilton High. Well, as a result of that, Mr. Wesson's office and mine, but in particular the LAPD under the leadership of the captain, got together and decided we needed to do something more for the youth in our community. And so with the captain's leadership, we formed the Robertson Activity League, and that is something which, over the past several months, has been giving dozens and dozens of kids in the neighborhood positive outlets for themselves, for their energies, positive ways to interact with one another, and the chance to meet with a whole bunch of role models. And when I visited Beth Ryan and the kids a few weeks ago, it was really great to see the real spectrum of people that you had working with these kids. And the senior lead officers were there, they were undercover, and... And the senior lead officers were there, they were undercover, and they looked great, and the kids were really relating to them. And it's shown real results, not only in the crime rate in our area, but it's just shown real results in the area of civic pride, in the area of community cohesion, and it's a real model for this whole city. And Captain, as you will probably say in a few moments, there are others who've been working with you who deserve a lot of the credit, but without your leadership and vision and patience, none of it would have been possible. It would not be so successful. And I cannot tell you what a wonderful, calming, and peacemaking influence you have been on this community. And so I'm very grateful. I can tell you from the bottom of his heart, Herb Wesson is very grateful, and we are gathered here today to honor Captain Aborn. But before we do that, Beth Ryan, why don't you come forward and tell us what you're toting around?
Thank you very much for having us here. I just want to commend Captain Carol Aborn Curry on behalf of the over 200 students that we've taken in from the program, and most especially the appreciative and incredibly grateful parents where we've been able to give them a safe haven. We've had officers there every day, and it's due to Captain Carol Aborn's Curry vision and leadership and certainly commitment. So on behalf of the entire community, this is just actually a sampling of the thank-you letters written by the parents as well as the students. So I want to present you with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiss, Mr. Zine would like to add his nice words right here if we could.
Mr. Zine, before you speak, the captain's commander, Commander Lillo, is here, and I'd like to ask him to say a few words on behalf of the LAPD.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. Captain Carol Aborn Curry, full name, has been one of the outstanding area commanding officers for the department. She's done a tremendous job and has had a particular interest in youth programs and prevention and intervention. Everyone in the department has been working for years for suppression. She's one of the, one of several who have recognized the importance of both prevention and intervention. And if we're going to have an effect there, it's going to be with the youth who are going to be the leaders of tomorrow. Thank you very much for the job that you have done for all of us.
And we're going to hear from Mr. Zine and then from the captain. I just want to echo what the commander said. It is really important at this time when we are all so focused, quite rightly, on the issues of gang violence in this city. And we've been discussing, Mr. Cardness has been leading the way, which programs work, how do you measure them, how do you know? The sort of programs, I think Mr. Cardness would agree undoubtedly work, are precisely what the captain has done here. It's very grassroots, it's very organic. It's, it costs money, but ultimately, it's actually not really about money, it's about time and commitment from the community leaders and from the local government. And my guess is that if, Mr. Cardness, that if you put this on the matrix that you're going to be creating, you would find that, you know, pound for pound, penny for penny, this has been an extraordinarily effective way to fight crime in a particular neighborhood. Mr. Zine, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. West Valley to West LA.
Yes, sir.
Valley resident, you're still living out in the 3rd District, I assume?
Yes.
And the family is expanding?
Yes.
Which is wonderful. I just want to offer my congratulations. I know when you were over at West Valley, we had a great working relationship, things were getting done over in the West Valley. That was my 1st Division, West LA, and I see some of the familiar faces behind you, the members of the LAPD, to help make those programs successful. And that leadership at the top is what really brings it together. So I want to offer my personal congratulations. I followed you from the Valley to the West Side, that great travel over the 405 freeway, you were so much closer to home working in West Valley. We have a new station coming online pretty soon, Canoga and Roscoe, so you may want to consider going back to your roots in the San Fernando Valley where we need you.
Very kind of you to make that suggestion, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Really happy in West LA.
Thank you. Congratulations. And to the support team that helped make this all come together with your leadership, congratulations to everyone else, including the D2 or D3, or sergeant now, congratulations, sergeant. You, the sergeant right there. I remember you, too. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Cardness?
Thank you, Councilmember Weiss, for pointing that out, and I'd like to commend all of you for being involved in this grassroots, take care of your neighborhood responsibly and with the proper authorities. That's the kind of grassroots activity that actually not only saves us, it actually uses very little money when you look at the bigger scheme of things. It actually saves us, dollar for dollar, many, many, many dollars down the road. So this is the kind of grassroots American activity that makes me proud to be an American when you have government responding responsibly, you have the community acting responsibly and asking for that kind of cooperation. And when we respond, wonderful things like this happen. So congratulations.
Thank you so much for this recognition, but as was pointed out, I certainly didn't do it alone, although I may have provided the leadership. It was, although it came out of tragedy, we had three homicides in one week in very close proximity, but it mobilized the community. And thanks to Councilman Wesson's and Councilman Weiss's staff, Liz and Kate, where are you? Here's Liz, really organizing and bringing the community together. And we essentially provided the leadership in bringing some ideas forward. And it was a huge collaboration between council, community, the city attorney's office, the school district, Parks and Rec, and clearly the police department. And a number of things actually happened. We had a safety night at Hamilton High. We have another, a number of programs going on. But we really are extremely happy with this activities program that we put together. As Beth pointed out, we've had a couple hundred students involved in it, three weeks over the holidays, around winter. During the spring break, we expanded it to another park, so we're trying to reach out to another community. And it's just had a wonderful impact, specifically in this community where there were the homicides, we're transforming that community, participation throughout. And if it wasn't for everyone that was involved, and I would like to give them a hand. Thank you for all your work, and it's been a pleasure creating this and watching it grow and knowing that it's going to last beyond my tenure at West LA. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. I'd like to recognize Mr. Zine for another presentation.
Thank you.
While we're waiting, Mr. Zine, now quickly, just call the roll?
Alacon Cardness, Rohan Wezar Labange, Parks Perry, Reyes, Rosenfeld Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine Garcetti, 12 members present and a core, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President, for joining me. Commander Val Panacea and his family and his daughters, Rebecca, Rachel, his wife, Diana, and also, who else do we have here? Chief Moore. Oh, sisters? Sister Patty, Vicky. Chief Moore, Chief Carter. Chief Paeslinger was here, but I think he had to return to duty. Well, it's definitely Law Enforcement Day here at City Hall. And fond farewells to legends in the Los Angeles Police Department. Commander Valentino P. Panacea, dedicated 38 years of service to the Los Angeles Police Department on April 30, 2007, his final day with the Police Department. Pointed to the Los Angeles Police Department November 3, 1968, demonstrated outstanding professional conduct in law enforcement and a wide variety of assignments, including Policeman 1, 2, and 3, assigned to Training Division, Central Division; Investigator 1, assigned to our Administrative Narcotics; Sergeant 1 and 2, Northeast Division; Lieutenant 1 and 2, Newton Division; Central Traffic Division; Central Bureau, Personal and Training Bureau; Captain 1, assigned to Personal and Training Bureau; Southeast Division, Foothill Division; West Valley Division; Captain 3, assigned to West Valley Division, Van Nuys Division; Commander, assigned to Juvenile Services Group, Development Division, and Valley Bureau. And that's his current assignment, Valley Bureau, operation within the San Fernando Valley. Dedicated by his supervisors, he's been described to his supervisor as a dedicated officer with a high degree of job integrity, possesses good judgment, common sense in field situations, conscientious member of the Los Angeles Police Department, very effective in dealing with the public, exceptional public relations man, always loyal to the department, to supervisors and subordinates, and stays in impeccable condition. Commander Panacea sailed within the Police Department, earned his bachelor's science degree in public administration from Cal State University at Los Angeles. I got that one right. Last time it was, anyway, never mind. Graduate of the FBI National Academy, California Peace Officer Standard and Training Command College. Further described by his supervisor as one of the most respected veterans in the department, highly trusted, very capable in the role of a commander with the Los Angeles Police Department, truly proven his worth to the Los Angeles Police Department and the people of the City of Los Angeles. During his many years of police service, received numerous commendations and awards for himself, his subordinates, attesting to his utmost professionalism and contributions to police service and the community. And it is with great pride that we have double presentation, the resolution signed by everyone, Greg Smith. Come on down, you're supposed to be up here with me. Yeah, you're supposed to be up here with me, Greg Smith. You're another Valley Reserve. I just looked at it, Greg Smith. Now, you can hold this.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
I knew Greg's useful for some, right? And we have the plaque, seal of the City of Los Angeles. Congratulations on your retirement, April 30, 2007. After 38 years of dedicated and devoted service to the City of Los Angeles and its citizens, a great deal of trust and authority was placed in your hands. You have proven through your good character, strong integrity and good judgment, your dedication to carry out responsibilities, your time, talent, and skills have been greatly appreciated. Best wishes for your future health, prosperity, and happiness with your lovely family. And this is from your friends here at the Los Angeles City Council. There was one hosted by the Winnetka Chamber of Commerce. There was another one last night, and I was unable to attend because I was down in the Beach Cities at a presentation, giving us a talk. But this is a man who is a street cop as commander. When you talk about that, a man who has not forgotten his role as a member of the Police Department, to make arrests, to get involved, to get engaged, to do those activities. And moreover than anything else, to stay in physical condition. The waist that you have now is probably the waist that you had when you entered the police academy. Unlike many of us who have expanded a few inches, more than a few inches, but we're trying to lose weight, right, Greg?
You are.
So we can fit in those uniforms. We're working on that. So my colleague, Councilmember Greg Smith, for some words, and then we'll hear from the command staff, and then finally, we'll hear from you. And then we'll close. You know what? Because I know you're a minister, we're going to close with a prayer, which is a little unusual, but we're going to do that, because this is a very special occasion for Val. Greg?
Thank you very much. First of all, what most of you don't know is in 30 and a half years with the LAPD, this man missed one day sick time. One day. That is the kind of man he is. He viewed wearing that badge not as a job, but as a responsibility, and it's one he took on very proudly, and he carried himself throughout his career very proudly. He is a man of extreme honor and integrity. And I wish that when we talked to Judge Feis about LAPD, that this man was in the courtroom, because this is the image of LAPD I want people to see. A man of absolute integrity and honor and respect for the badge and the things he did to represent the people of LA when he wore that badge. He did it with honor and integrity, and he never let us down in 30 and a half, eight years. And so it's really bittersweet today that we say goodbye to him, because this is not the kind of man we want to be losing. But it's sweet because those of us who love and respect him and his family, that we get to see them go off to some place, it's Kentucky. And as I recall, when I was in school, we colored that state, it's American, isn't it? American, okay. Yeah, somewhere in the country, United States. So he's going to that place wherever it is that no one ever knows, because nobody's ever been there, but he'll be the one person from LA that represents the entire city over in Kentucky, wherever that is. Anyway, he's going to retire and enjoy the rest of his life with his beautiful wife and his family, and it is well deserved, because he gave us 38 years of his life, and now he's going to give the rest of his life to his family and his wife, and it's well deserved, and we appreciate everything he did to represent the people of Los Angeles and the LAPD, and to wear the badge proudly, represent the City LAPD every single day with great pride, and a project of faith to all Angelenos, that we really respect this department, that they are respectable, that they are deserving of our respect, and he's the kind of man that built LAPD into the great organization it is. So on behalf of all of us, thank you. God bless you, and may God look over you in your days in that other state, wherever it is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
We have some representatives from the department first.
Okay, and then a few other council members.
Sure.
Chief Michael Moore.
Thank you.
Commander of the Valley.
Well.
Deputy Chief of the Valley.
Very good.
You've got the microphone.
Absolutely. Mr. President, members of the commission, or City Council, it's a great honor to be here today and to offer just a few words of support to really congratulate a man who is much like these halls, an institution, a man who represents the values of this organization so well. He was promoted to commander by then Chief Parks, and his service in the San Fernando Valley for the last eight, nine years has only amplified his value, his relationship with the community. He's been a partner to me here for the last couple of years that has always been there at 3:00 in the morning or 3:00 at night, at any time, day or night, to serve the citizens of this community. He's a man of faith, and his faith comes through each day at work in his service and his integrity and in his dedication to this city. While he leaves to Kentucky here on Tuesday, he leaves behind a great, a great history, a great group of us within LAPD that will always hold him in high regard. And he also leaves a home that I'm hopeful that when he gets to Kentucky, he'll find, as someone pointed out last night, there are no shopping malls there, and he'll be back. So it is with great pleasure, though, that I'm here to congratulate him for 38 and a half years of service and one of great dedication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief Lee Carter.
Thank you. I would really like to commend an old partner, Val Panacea, for not only the many years of service to the cities of Los Angeles, but also to the community of West Valley. I had the unenviable task of following Commander Val Panacea when he was the captain of West Valley. And in the Los Angeles Police Department, it's always easier to follow somebody when you can go in there and fix things. Everything was perfect at West Valley. The programs that, at the time, Captain Panacea had in place were the models that other areas in the city really mimicked and borrowed and modified to their own areas. I mean, as far as the Gray Squad, the Tagger Task Force out in the valley that focused in on the identification, apprehension of taggers, and the eradication of graffiti, the Beggar Task Force, so many other programs that Val actually not only developed but implemented that have been taken citywide, the Crisis Response Team, which was modeled under Val. Many of these things that a lot of people don't realize that he was instrumental in not only developing but implementing. And so you made my job much more difficult, but I tell you what, I learned from you, I appreciate it. You've always been a guide on for me, and we're going to miss you a whole lot.
And a few council members who would like to add their good wishes?
Sure.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Val, I just want to say thank you for your service. We've worked together for a number of years, and I was just pleased to have an opportunity to promote you to commander. Val is one of those people that says very little, just gets the work done, but there's not a real appreciation for him until you actually look into his work, go to his division, and see what he's done. And Val and I have talked about this before, is that there are people in a large organization that would whisper about different people's career. And it wasn't until you take a moment and begin to look at what he's done that you get a true appreciation and actually see that he gets the promotions he deserved. Everywhere that he's worked, he's created a model program, model systems. People would come and find out, how did you do that? He won't get the credit, but the issue of, excuse me, why we have a West Valley station is Val's persistence. is Val's persistence of figuring out a way to, he was going to build one more trailer. He was going to add one more outside porch. And finally, it got to the point he said, build him a station before he builds it himself. But it was through his diligence that it brought the attention of the department to say, West Valley had outlived that station. In fact, it wasn't much different than when I was there in, I guess, '77 or '76. It was almost an identical facility. But the key is, is that Val's the one that brought people's attention. And he would find a way to get it done. If you needed a room for computers, he would put a roof on something and put a door on it, and you'd have a room for computers. If you wanted a new roll call room, he'd go out in the community and he'd find somebody to sell those chairs. He did it like the universities, to where people would have their name on the chairs and also have linoleum and things where officers had a decent place to come to roll call. But again, you have to really get an opportunity to go see him in action, to get an appreciation. And certainly, if I had anything to do with it, he certainly would have made commander much earlier than what he made it. Because I think he was one of those individuals that got caught up in a large organization in which people didn't give him the credit that he deserved. But best wishes. You owe me a photo of the first tractor photo. You owe me a photo of the first snowstorm. All those things. I want to see Val Panacea as a farmer in Kentucky. Best wishes and to the family.
Ms. Gruel. Ms. Gruel's our next speaker, and then Mr. Lavanchi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. And I want to add my congratulations. I've had the pleasure of working with Val in the last five years as an elected official. And I think, as described, not only is he a good police officer that he has been over the many, many years, but a very spiritual gentleman in what he does. And that comes through in his interaction with the public, in his interaction with his officers, and for the good of the people. And I have enjoyed that relationship. And I too couldn't make it last night to his dinner. But I heard it was really fabulous, that it was an opportunity for people to say thank you. And that's what we're doing today. Thank you for your patience today. We had a long presentation. So I appreciate that. But we will miss you. I didn't realize you were actually like moving so quickly out of town. But we will welcome you with open arms. And you have made a big difference in the lives of the San Fernando Valley and the lives of the officers in the community. And for that, we want to say thank you very, very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. And Mr. Lavanchi.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Val, to your family and to your coworkers. I think, you know, Dennis was a little upset that you're leaving. I'm happy for you and your family. 38 years is a lot of commitment to Los Angeles. And what Mr. Smith said, if I heard it correctly, you never missed a day? Never missed a day of illness? One day. All right, you know? That's tremendous, tremendous to point for. And the legacy through these officers and others who are here to support you. I don't know if you have asked them to stand behind you, right? I mean, just stand up and give them a hand. Because you learned from a great man who served 38 years with Los Angeles Police Department. Look at all that right there. And enjoy your retirement. Hope you have a nice, long retirement. And get your hands dirty and enjoy the earth. Because we've got to take care of it. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Val, thank you. And congratulations to you and your family.
And Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to join with everybody, Val, and just thank you for everything you've done. You are, in my view, you're not just, you're the face of the LAPD in the valley, but you really are the heart and soul of the LAPD in the valley. That's how I've always encountered you. And whether it's starting off an event by doing the Pledge of Allegiance or just all the, I mean, I've never been to a community event in the valley which hasn't had you prominently featured, rightly so. And I wish you and your family the very, very best. Thank you, Val.
That reminds me, when we had the farewell at the Winnetka Chamber of Commerce, Councilmember Alarcon attended. And Councilmember Alarcon used to work for the Personnel Department, wrote the civil service exams. And he made comment that every time Val took a test, he was number one on that test, repeated times. And his name was well-known in the Personnel Department for a very intelligent member of the Los Angeles Police Department who kept on scoring. I wasn't there, Tom Lavanchi, so he pointed at me. No. I was at the bottom of that list. But the comment was from Councilmember Alarcon, is that every time a test that Commander Panacea took, he was scored number one, time after time after time. A very intelligent man, a very dedicated member of the Los Angeles Police Department. We're going to hear from Val now. And then following that, his wife, who is a minister, we're going to have a closing prayer as we did at the Winnetka Chamber. Commander Val Panacea.
Thank you very much for honoring me today. I read the Blue Line, which is the league paper, last week. And in that paper, it had a list of retirees over the next few weeks that total 2,468 years of experience. My 38 years does not compare to all the people that are leaving over the next few weeks as far as gravity of numbers. We're losing a lot of experience, a lot of great people. I would like to think that I'm only here representing all those people today, not just myself. I've been honored time and again by people that know me and love me. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that honor and love. And I want to thank the city for giving me a job 38 and a half years ago. That from the day I entered the academy, I've had nothing but fun, met great people, worked with the best of the best across our society, and have been honored to share the responsibility for protecting and serving. God bless you all.
First, before I pray, before I pray, I would just like to say a couple of things. Because my husband, I don't feel has gotten the recognition because he's done so many things. I have to say it, right?
Go ahead.
I mean, it's my husband. I got to brag, right?
You got to brag.
He started a motel. They called it a Motel Six, because he had six guys. And they successfully, just this week or last week, made 900 arrests, starting that. Because they would go into the hotels, and they get people who are criminals, and they have identity theft and all that. And they just made 900 arrests because he started this program about, what, two years?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. And I just want you to know that there's a lot of crime off the streets and out of the motels because of him. He also took the slows out of the cars and put them back out of the streets for the community. I don't think anyone, well, people know this, but I just want to public it, publicly, say that. Was there something else? Jeopardy. He started Jeopardy. And he went to a groundbreaking recently, but I don't even think they knew that he was part of the ground, the foundation of that. So anyway, I just want publicly to say those things about my husband. Because he's done a lot of great things that people have not really, they don't know, don't know about.
And he does a lot without fanfare. He just does it out of his heart and of the goodness.
Yeah.
Good wishes for the people of Los Angeles.
That's right.
He's well-known for that.
Thank you. Okay. Father, we just give you praise right now. Thank you, Father, for this council. And thank you for the president. And Father, we thank you for all the leadership that is here today to honor my husband, and Lord, and the honor that has gone forth for him. And Father, that honor, like he says, is for all of the community workers and the people in the community that work hard, and all the officers, and all of the different divisions, Lord, that work hard to make it a better place, a safer place for your people. And so, Lord, I know that righteousness exalts a nation. And that's what we represent here today. Righteousness that will exalt this nation, exalt this city to be a better place and where the people can walk on the streets and be free and be safe. And we give you praise for that, in your name, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. President. Val? Everybody back for photos. There are photos in the back. I'd like to recognize at this time from our sixth council district, Councilmember Tony Cardenas. And I believe the Councilmember Smith is going to help do the first one.
I'm very pleased to join in the parade of retiring police officers today. And I'm very happy that Commander Moore is staying with us for this. Our chief, Moore, is giving. We have two detectives from the Foothill Division who are leaving us after very, very distinguished careers in the LAPD. So I'd ask that Detective Steve Ostie and Detective Bishop, please come forward. And we're also joined by Captain Carreri, Captain, commanding officer, Foothill Division. And my former captain and commander at Devonshire. We have been very pleased, and for many years, to have just wonderful people in the Foothill Division. A division has a lot of challenges, a lot of problems to solve. Had many times very, very high crime spikes. But we've always gotten them under control. And we've maintained control to protect and serve the people of that very challenged community with very, very dedicated police officers. And two of them are here today saying goodbye to us, as did Val Panacea. Steve Ostie joined the LAPD in August of 1968. He is 38 years with the LAPD. He started off his career, and it says here on the right, and this is funny. It says here, he started his career as a recruit and then became a Police Officer One. Well, anyone knows that a Police Officer One is a recruit. So it actually was the same thing. He became a Police Officer Two and Three. He moved on up to the position of Investigator One and Investigator Two. And that's very significant because we don't even have that title anymore in LAPD. So you're one of a breed of officers that went through and held the position of investigator that no longer even exist. He then assumed the rank of Detective Two and Detective Two Supervisor. He spent 34 years in investigative capacity assigned to the homicide and robbery units as a detective supervisor in West Los Angeles Division and in Foothill Division. His outstanding investigative prowess and professionalism has been recognized throughout his career by numerous commendations he has received from his supervisors, commanding officers, and other law enforcement agencies, as well as the private citizens. We're very pleased to recognize him for his outstanding work. And he's also joined today by one of his partners at Foothill Division, and that is Francis Bishop. Francis Bishop is retiring after 36 years on the LAPD. He started off as a student worker within LAPD. And we're trying to revitalize that program to get young people back in the police department as students, where he started in 1969. He then was assigned to the Van Nuys Station, North Hollywood Station, and on to administrative narcotics. On February 23, 1971, he became a sworn recruit with the LAPD, moving through the ranks to P Two, P Three, Detective One, Detective Two, and Detective Three. He's served 22 years in the homicide, completing tours at Wilshire Division and Foothill Detectives and homicide, as the homicide coordinator there. Detective Bishop's outstanding investigative prowess and professionalism has also been recognized throughout his career by numerous commendations he received from private citizens and supervisors and the commanding officers and other law enforcement. Both of these gentlemen, again, just like Val Panacea, are the best of the best. They have built the reputation of LAPD into being the crack organization that it is, the fine organization that it is, the organization that protects and serves the people of LA with great pride and distinction. And these are the kind of men that I wish that Judge Feis would see when he tells us we're not doing our job right, because we are doing our job right. And these guys are proof and positive that the LAPD is the finest police organization in the world. And they wear that badge proudly, and they did it throughout their career. And we want to thank them for that service to our people, to the people of the San Fernando Valley, to the people of the city of Los Angeles, to making the organization, they are leaving, a better police department, and to making the communities they are leaving a better community to live in. So God bless both of you, and thank you. And I'd like to ask both of them. Steve, start off. Could you say a few words, please?
Just a few words. I've had a great career with the department. It's been a good life, a good job. I've enjoyed it. It's time to move on with my family. And I'm also looking forward to that. And say goodbye to my old academy classmate, Councilman Zine. Thank you.
Mr. Zine wanted to add one good word.
I just wanted to, I haven't seen Steve in a long time. We entered the academy August 11, 1968, 8/11/68. That's when we entered the police academy. That's when we entered the Police Academy. And to see you're one of the last remaining members of our class that's retiring, I think you said there's like three left. Our class are still in the job, over 38 years of service with the Police Department. You started in West LA, you ended up in Foothill. And I'll never forget, and I told you earlier, that little Volkswagen, they had a Volkswagen Thing. And it was, I don't know what it was, but it was called the Thing. I remember seeing you drive around in that thing many, many years that we worked together from the academy. It's incredible. And you're moving to that wonderful paradise, Idaho, where many, many officers retire in peace and tranquility, without congestion, without all of the metropolitan area congestion and chaos sometimes. So I wish you and your family the best in your retirement. It's hard to think back, 8/11/1968, when we stood there at the Los Angeles Police Academy, and here we are, this many years later, bidding your farewell and your happy retirement. And one thing I tell people who retire, all you gotta do to get that pension check the first of the month is just wake up in the morning, and that's all you gotta do, and you well earned it, 38 years of service. God bless you and your family.
Thank you very much. I'm very honored to be here in front of you today. I'm honored to have been a Los Angeles Police Officer for 36 years. I'm honored to have worked with such men as the chief up there sitting next to the council president, Chief Parks, did a lot for myself and my family. And I appreciate that I was able to work for people such as Captain Carreri and the chiefs of the Bureau. I was very fortunate to have worked Wilshire and Foothill. As you can see, that's about all I did. But it was a great career. I wouldn't have changed it for anything. The honor to serve the public of this city does not pass me by. Being able to be a police officer was a great honor, and I want to thank you very much for this opportunity to come up here, and thank you for a great career.
We are joined today by the Commanding Officer of Foothill Division, a man who I've known for a very long time, a very dear friend of mine, was a great captain at Devinger Division, and my commanding officer for seven years now at Foothill Division, is doing a wonderful job over there, Captain Joe Carreri.
I'd just like to say how privileged and honored I am to have been associated with and served with these two outstanding detectives. They truly represent the very best in their field, and it's through the efforts of these two individuals and other men and women like them that help keep the city of Los Angeles an outstanding place to live, work, and visit. I congratulate them on their retirement and wish them and their families all the very best in the future.
Mr. President, members of the council, I want to also join in with Captain Carreri's remarks, and congratulations to both Steve and Frank. Both these individuals have been detectives for a very long time, to the extent that when I made detective some 20 years ago, I looked to Frank for leadership, for instruction, for guidance. And he, even then, I know him better than I do Steve, but they both represent the very best as to what we look for investigators. When we look at crime reduction here in Los Angeles, and we look through our comstat process, or we look to command, control, leadership, we really look to our detectives. We look to them because they, and these supervisors that they are both, they are the ones that really guide and direct investigations. They're the ones that can identify to us as managers, as Captain Carreri, myself, the weak points, the strong points, where we need to put more, where frankly, we need to put less. And we look to them every day to understand how do we provide for public safety? How do we bring suspects who are responsible for the crimes against the citizens in the city to justice? And I want to congratulate them both, and I also want to extend my heartfelt appreciation as both a member of this department, as a fellow law enforcement officer, but also as part of the command leadership to their families. Both these gentlemen have not mentioned it, but they've made sacrifices, countless sacrifices over these years, to serve the citizens of this city. And while for that they're ably rewarded with good pensions and a reasonable salary, they left at home on many occasions, families that would not know when they'd come home, did not know when they would see them again, and I'm sure on more than one holiday or festive occasion, they weren't at home when many of us were. And so to their family members and to their friends and supporters and colleagues, I thank them for the sacrifices they've made to the citizens of this city for the 36, 38 years of service, the decades of service, and I wish them both well in their well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
And with that, I'm very pleased to present to both these fine gentlemen, Frank and Steve, their certificate of appreciation from the City of Los Angeles City Council for your many years of dedicated and distinguished service to the people of Los Angeles. God bless you. Thank you.
We'll bring all in the back. Last, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Tony Cardenas for our final presentation Thank you, President Garcetti. Members, I'd like Robert Anthony Rodriguez to come forward, please.
Thank you. Today I have the honor and the pleasure of giving a resolution, a proclamation, to a wonderful young man, Robert Anthony Rodriguez. And on April 19th, 2006, he walked into a restaurant in the San Fernando Valley, and he walked into a restaurant and noticed that there was a crowd around something going on in that restaurant. And he shortly noticed that it was a little girl, and she was choking. And when he realized that the people watching this happen, including the child's parents, didn't know what to do, he stepped in. He's been trained, he's a worker for the city of Los Angeles, and he's been trained in first aid and CPR. So he immediately grabbed the child and started to perform the Heimlich maneuver. It wasn't working. The child went limp in his arms, and he looked around as people looked panicked and afraid, he didn't panic. He continued to perform first aid, and as a result, dislodged what was in her throat, and she immediately began to breathe. As you can imagine, the child's parents couldn't thank him enough. Truly, had he not stepped forward at that moment in time and took charge of that situation, that child very likely would have died. Other people were there, other people wanted to do something, but they didn't know what to do. They didn't know how to fix the situation. He saved a little girl's life because he used the skills that he learned as an employee of this city, and he saved a life. I wanted his family to come forward because I happen to know this young man, and I happen to know his family. And I happen to know that that is exactly how he was raised. He lives in a family where they respond when they hear a call, that they do something when action needs to be taken. I think this is a fine moment, ladies and gentlemen, that we reflect and think about how we are raising our children, how we as families, and how we as a city are giving examples to the people so that they can be the future leaders, the people who step in and take action when action is needed, positive action. It gives me great pleasure and honor to give this certificate to Anthony, Robert Anthony Rodriguez, for his heroic efforts, and as he would usually say, he was just doing what he needed to do. Even though our heroes don't think of themselves as heroes, I think it's up to us to recognize when heroes step up and thank them so that other people can see that it doesn't take someone with a degree, it doesn't take someone with a certain certificate to do the job. It takes responsible people to step up at that moment and to fight through the situation and bring the proper outcome, and in this case, saving a little girl's life. So I'd like Robert to come forward and say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the LA City and also Public Works and Bureau of Street Services for allowing me to do my job. I want to thank them for hiring me and giving me a life with this job that I have. And also, I know at the time when that little girl was, when I was saving her life, she actually, she passed out on me, and she turned purple, and her eyes rolled back in the back of her head. And I remember looking at her mom's eyes, and she was looking at me like, as if I was an angel, like, don't give up on my daughter. And my heart was racing, and I just asked God that he would give me the strength to continue with her. And after I brought her through, shortly after the ambulance had arrived, and they took all the information down, and they had asked me what I performed on her, and I told her, just two weeks ago, I got my CPR card through the city of Los Angeles, and I never thought I would ever use it in my life. I'm 37, I've never saved anyone's life before, and then two weeks after, here I am, you know, saving a little girl's life. So I just want to thank the city for providing the classes, and I just want to thank the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony Robert Rodriguez. And as you've seen many times before, when we honor our heroes, they spend more time thanking everyone else than themselves. But today is our opportunity to say thank you to you. A young girl is going to live a long and prosperous life because you stepped up, you didn't give up, you actually prayed to God that he'd give you the strength to continue, and lo and behold, wonderful things happen. So God bless you, and thank you for being a hero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, Madam Clerk. We can first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds. There's no objection, those are unanimously approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rosenthal moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. If we can run through the agenda, please?
On the regular agenda, items one through eight are items noted for public hearings, and the recommendation for council action is to open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to May 11th.
Okay, we will go ahead and open those hearings, and without objection, we'll continue those ordinances till the 11th of May. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items nine and 10. Reports have been submitted on both those items, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed on item number 10.
Mr. City Attorney, does that amending motion trigger a public hearing again, or is it consistent?
On item number 10, out of the abundance of caution, perhaps, public hearing should be reopened briefly.
Okay. All that special, there's also cards on nine, but doesn't require a special hearing. Does anybody wish to call nine special? Number nine. If not, let's go ahead. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on nine, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 11 through 26, 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on several of the items.
Cards on 12, 19, 23, 24, and 26. Are there specials, Ms. Perry?
I think I just reduced, say, 12.
12 is called special for cards, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll put you down for calling that special as well. Okay, any other specials, Mr.?
Yes.
Nope. No, there's specials on the balance of the items, sorry, I'd like to call 25 special. And on the balance, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next.
Mr. President.
Which one forthwith? Eighteen, without objection, colleagues, we'll send that forthwith. And if we can call the special meeting roll?
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weiser, Labange, Parks, Carey, Reyes, Rosenell, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a core, Mr. President.
Okay, colleagues, we have two items before us, items 27 and 28?
27A and B, it's actually two track maps.
Okay, just 27A and B. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's go ahead, and do not have public speaker cards on that, so we'll open and close the hearing, and please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved as well. Going back to the regular meeting.
We should take a public comment at this time.
Please, I'd like to thank public comment folks for their patience this morning during our presentations, our first person is Zuma Dog. And after that will be Doge Cute.
Yes, thank you very much, City Council. As you know, Mayor Antonio had state of the city early this week. Time for Zuma Dog's state of the city. I'd like to say, first of all, thank you, Mayor Antonio Viagraosa, for finally coming out to denial and admitting the fact that we're turning into a marble and cardboard box society here, the middle class is getting reamed, and the point is that, yes, the rich are getting richer, the poor are getting poorer, and expect all class systems in between to get knocked down a notch. That's my state of the city. You're going to have middle class becoming low income, not being able to afford to live in the city anymore. You're going to have low-income people getting pushed to the streets for the first time. That's something that's important. Now let's talk about Venice Beach, the issue that brought me in here one year ago today. I just heard that the sergeant, the sergeant of the Pacific Division LAPD says that the city attorney is putting the Police Department in a bad spot because they're writing tickets on Venice Beach still, and they know the federal decision is going to come out to overturn the ordinance, so they're getting a lot of complaints filed on them, and you're setting up the LAPD to get sued quite a bit over this ordinance. And so maybe you're going to have the city attorney work something out, because when the sergeant says you're putting them in a bad spot, that's not very cool. I would like to thank you, it's been a year, Zuma Dog at City Hall, I'd like to thank you for a few things. First of all, some Brown Act enforcement, the City Council, when we walked in here, they were violating every day, there's some Brown Act enforcement. Special event fee waiver abuse, thanks to Jack Weiss's memo, has allowed me to help talk about that, and I'm seeing a lot less fee waiver abuse, so thank you for that. Noel Weiss, great person in this city, you've seen here quite a lot, he had some legislation, nine and 17. We've tripled the amount of relocation fees. Thank you, Noel Weiss, for that. Vacancy rates, all these things. So I'd like to say you can come to City Council, you can talk to them, it's not easy, but you can make some change. Thank you, Noel Weiss, for that. Thank you for the vacancy rates, thank you for the affordable housing, thank you for so many things, and we'll see you for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Doge Cute?
Yes, my name is Deje Cuti. I reside in Central Hollywood. Good morning, Council. I come before you this morning on a complex issue that needs your immediate attention. I provided some background information here and have outlined my concerns for this letter that I'll be providing to the clerk for each of you. I was one of the first responders to the federal raid on a medical cannabis collective in West Hollywood, West Hollywood Caregivers Group on Election Day, March 6th. I began taking photos of the scene and immediately encountered an agent who threatened me with arrest for photographing the busted door. In no way impeding the movements of the agents, I continued to take pictures from at least 20 feet from the scene and behind West Hollywood Sheriff's present. Soon, a plainclothes officer walked past them and up to me and introduced himself as an agent of the federal government. This agent was none other than LAPD Officer Dennis Packer, escorting the DEA into the sanctuary city of West Hollywood, a clear example of cross-deputization. On April 11th, Dennis Packer laid another armed raid in Woodland Hills where three patient providers were arrested and taken to the federal building on Temple Street, where they were told they would not be charged and therefore would not go before the court on the matter. An LAPD officer should not be paid to conduct federal raids where patients will not have their day in court. There are already state laws in place to criminally prosecute individuals who possess, cultivate, and distribute cannabis illegally and outside the terms defined by the California Health and Safety Code. I come before you to ask that you immediately seek to amend the Narcotic Division's policy of cooperation with federal authorities on medical cannabis-related cases. While there is a moratorium on new cannabis clinics and we work toward good regulations, there should be a moratorium on any further raids. Who can I give my letter to? Thank you for your time.
Hand that to the sergeant in arms, he'll be sure to take that. Thank you. Our next speaker, Santa and Norkey the Pen Eagle. Good morning.
Councilmember Garcetti and Council. I'm with SaveTheParade@yahoo.com, where we started our campaign about five weeks ago to save the Hollywood Christmas Parade. This is my friend Norkey the Pen Eagle from the North Pole, and this is our community relations Brody Farmer. One of the things that we have come to understand is that this parade is for the kids. A lot of the kids, we have visited Hollywood High and also Blessed Sacrament School, and they all have encouraged us to continue our walk on Wednesdays, and we want to encourage the City Council to come out with us. What we do is we walk down Hollywood Boulevard and pass out our flyers to save the parade. We've been in contact with individuals like Denzel Washington, we've been in contact with Disney, we've been in contact with other individuals that will be walking with us at certain times. And one of the things that I wanted to remind the City Council is that at the parade in the city of Hollywood, dreams are made, and LA is a city of angels. One of the biblical responsibilities of angels are to nurture dreams. And I think that every time a child sees a parade, as happened last year, when Mr. Parks was riding in the parade, one of my friends witnessed a little boy say to his mom, "Mom, who is Mr. Parks?" And his mother explained to him who Mr. Parks was, and the little boy's comment back to her was, "Do you think one day I could be like Mr. Parks?" So that is a good example of why the 75-year tradition should stay in Hollywood on the Boulevard. The kids only get one day a year, and that's this Christmas parade.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your comments. I know Mr. Labange and I, since we heard the chamber would not be doing the parade for the first year this year, are working very hard. We look forward to working with you to continue to keep this great parade alive. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Come out with us on Wednesday, we'd love to have you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbarina Zucki, or Zuki? Excuse me if I mispronounce that.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Sorry, did I get the pronunciation right? Is it Zuki?
Barbarina Zwiki.
Zwiki, sorry.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm here regarding Griffith Observatory and the Big Picture Project. The Big Picture was commissioned to Caltech with that endeavor, and my father, as you have the handout, is the pioneer of the Sky Survey technique. Caltech did acknowledge my father as the pioneer of this effort, of the Sky Survey. This acknowledgement was not extended in the actual exhibit. I'm asking that the council reconsider my request that my father be named or mentioned on the introductory panel as the pioneer of this effort. I have been in contact with Recreation and Parks, Mr. McCree, and he has stated that, he has concluded that it is not appropriate for the City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation to add recognition of my father's work in astronomy. My father's work is key in astronomy, dark matter, that's his coinage, his discovery in the 1930s, that 99% of the universe is unknown, dark has gravitational pulls, it's center of cosmology now. His coinage is also supernova, gravitational lensing, the Sky Survey technique, neutron stars, and so forth. So in any event, there's just been a major deficit here in acknowledging my father, I don't know why that is. There seems to be a core resistance to acknowledging my father. The Griffith Observatory does serve public information, should strive to do that, and to deny one of the core astronomers who did his work here in Los Angeles County at Caltech is really benumbs the mind. So in any event, I would ask that you consider Griffith Observatory's failure to recognize my father and correct this deficit, thus restoring conciliation to my father's memory and his major contributions to the field of astronomy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Mary Benson is our next speaker. After Ms. Benson will be Carlos Garcia.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Mary Benson. I'm here to speak to you all about something near and dear to my heart and hopefully your hearts, and that's the Rim of the Valley Trail. In January of this year, Councilmembers Gruel and Labange joined me at the Los Angeles Equestrian Center, listening to the promise of Congressman Adam Schiff that he would reintroduce Rim of the Valley Trail federal legislation in Washington. That was completed in the House by Congressman Schiff, aided by and co-sponsored by Congressman Berman, and in the Senate by Senator Dianne Feinstein. Last year, the City Council resolved to support that legislation in Congress. I'm here to ask that the reintroduced bills I'm here to ask that the reintroduced bills in the new session of Congress be supported again by the mayor and City Council in a resolution of that legislation. I'm also here to ask that the City of Los Angeles step up and revise something else that was started in 1968, and that's a trail's master plan. That's not just my desire, but that is also for the benefit and the preservation of our natural spaces for our future generations. Please help preserve that past so that we can pass on the natural world and the benefits that that is, are derived from that to our kids of the future. With the assistance of National Parks, I've been given a grant and assistance to global position trails in the city of Los Angeles, and I'm hoping that the city can help join me in drafting a new master plan that will qualify it for 84%, 84 cents on the dollar of funding from the state of California for the revitalization of trails in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. Our next speaker is Carlos Garcia.
Mr. Garcetti, just before, I wanted to let Mary Benson know that, in fact, today we introduced the resolution to support it. So, we'll look forward to you coming back to Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mary.
Carlos Garcia is our next speaker. Is Carlos Garcia here? Not Arnold Sacks. Then after that will be Pacis or Pasis Goffney, and then Candido Morris.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Thank you very much. These, I'd like to speak on some items that are on Wednesday's agenda. One being, there was some discussion regarding the fire that occurred in Hollywood Hills last week, and during the discussion, it was brought up about liability for power lines belonging to Southern California Edison. And I was just curious to know for sure, because during the energy crisis in the early 2000s, late 90s, the early 2000s, one of the actions taken by the state legislature and Governor Gray Davis to help Southern California Edison avoid bankruptcy was that the state bought power lines, and now it's the ownership of high, high tension power lines. So, I was just curious to make sure that, that the lines that go through LA, the city of LA, actually do belong to Southern California Edison and are not under the ownership of the state of California, therefore making the people of California liable for anything that happens. Number two, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news, and I know that you spent some time applauding State Senator Ted Lieu and his efforts to bring the Green Line to extension to the airport, but according to the last meeting of the MTA Board on March 24, they are opposing Senator Lieu's bill, and I'm kind of surprised that you're not aware of that, seeing as you have council members not only on the board of the MTA, but the mayor is also on the board. And I would also like to know, and according to that last meeting, there was a motion made relative the appointment of a new council member from District 5 to the Exposition Metro, the Exposition Metro Line Construction Authority. Could I please find out, or could you please tell us who the council members are that are on the Gold Line East Side Extension, the Pasadena Gold Line Construction Authority, and the Gold Line Construction Authority?
Thank you.
And one more, please, sir.
I'm sorry, at the time, if you can pass it on.
I have an article from the Daily Breeze.
Goffney is our next speaker. Thank you. We'll make sure that gets circulated. Thank you. I'm sorry, what was the pronunciation?
Pace is Goffney.
Pace is, excuse me.
Morning, President and City Councilmembers. I represent Econ Opportunities Criminal Reform Program. I spent the past 10 years with my organization collectively putting together different companies that could take on the 10% at-risk contracts that are available in order to help create jobs for the urban areas. And basically, I'm here right now today to find out if there's a way that we can all get together with my colleagues so we can discuss actually making these contracts work. I went to the Contractor Symposium about a month ago, and I was very disappointed to see that most of the people that were there were preachers and other people of the city, but no actual contractors or ex-cons who wanted jobs were available. And I'm looking forward to trying to resolve this problem in the community with the lack of jobs, because that is what is committing the people to do crime, is there is no work for them.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Candido Morris, our last speaker for general public comment. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilmembers. Today's paper, School Denies Mayor's Claim of Gang War Over Turf at East High School. That's not what he was claiming. What he was claiming was that each one of our schools, every one of our schools is in jeopardy of gangs, and that he's going to do everything possible, as I know all of you are, to make sure that we end gangs in our school. Back in 91, 92, then Councilman Burnson and Mr. Smith were both trying to make our parks safe. Do you remember that, Mr. Smith? All we wanted to do was make them parks free of gangs. And what happened? We've lost lots of kids. The one thing that we cannot deny, Mr. President, Councilmembers, is that we're losing a lot of kids. We have kids that are dying in our streets, but there's another death that I talk about when the gangs take over schools and they recruit the kids and they're selling drugs, and that's got to stop. So, Mr. Mayor, this is still the city of the people, by the people, and for the people, and we will stand with you, shoulder to shoulder, to support you on this effort to take back our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. That closes our general public comment. Madam Clerk, go to the next item on the agenda.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 10, and that was called special. There are cards on that item, and also there is an amending motion that has been distributed to Council.
Okay, we have 10, that's 10A?
Yes, 10N and 10E.
We have a number of public speaker cards on this. We'll do 10 minutes of public hearing on this. We'll try to get as many people in as possible, and we will try to switch off on both sides. We do have a number of speakers who are impatiently waiting out in Van Nuys. I'm not sure which side they are on, but I will make sure to incorporate them in. Our first speaker is Michael Ribbons.
Mr. President and Councilmembers, I'm here to speak and ask the Council to send this matter back, to go back to the original proposal and requirements that were placed on this project. As some of the council members know, the Warner Center area currently under construction. There are over 2,700 housing units that are presently under construction, not to mention several that have been completed recently. Where this project is located, it is, it has been an underutilized industrial area, and while I have no objection, and I believe many other people in the area have no objection to the redevelopment, we do have an objection to the developer not paying traffic mitigation fees and not providing for workplace housing as well as affordable housing. The area is abutted by Van Owen and DeSoto, and I urge the council members to go out there at any given time at a rush hour, and you will find that it will take you as long as 10 minutes to go one-half mile.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. We're going to go out to Van Nuys next. Michael McCoon is our first speaker, and then Ann Bennett will be our second. Again, thank you for your patience, and if you could just state whether you're for or against the proposal before you speak. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We are against the proposal. We do not want anything else to change at this time. We are petitioning the city to deny the permit to the developer to apply for a permit to build apartments in the land now occupying our swap meet. We have many jobs for young people and old alike, and to eliminate and to disturb the Valley Indoor Swap Meet would be a tragedy. More apartments on Eaton and Varial would only overcrowd the now saturated area, as previously stated, that already many apartment buildings under construction, others are just sitting vacant. More apartments would be bringing additional traffic to the area that is already comprised by these recently built apartment buildings. The following individuals, which I have on a petition here, have signed this. We have letters that we've sent, we have petitions that we sent, we have a contingent here today that is representing all 300 vendors that are there, and we appreciate that you do not allow this developer to shortcut the red tape. Thank you.
Ann Bennett is our next speaker, also in Van Nuys, and then Michael Roberts, and then Richard Lee.
Hi, we appreciate the opportunity to speak to you folks, and I'm not going to be redundant and repeat what Richard has said, but, I mean, Mike has said, I'm sorry. But traffic is bad in that area. We don't need to make it worse. The congestion of people, you're just piling so many people into a small area, and we don't need it. We have very good, outstanding businesses going on at this swap meet, and we'd like to keep it that way. Apartments are being built, they're not being completed yet. They were due to be completed last fall, and they're still under construction. They're not being rented. They're all sitting vacant. We don't need more of this in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Roberts is our next speaker.
Hello. My family has owned the produce department at the Valley Indoor Swap Meet since it opened. It's been passed down from my grandfather to my father and from my father to myself. Not only my family, but many of the vendors can say the same. And the funny thing is that many of our customers are three generations as well. Point is, the swap meet is one big family. It has, it is home away from home. It is tradition. You not only destroy all these small businesses, all the tradition, and not to turn all of the, and not only that, you're turning all of our lives upside down by shutting down the swap meet. Please think of all the people you will be hurting before you make such a drastic change. And for what? To build more and more apartments or condos in an already overly congested area where traffic jams are commonplace, where over 500 units have already been built and very low percentage of them have been rented already.
Thank you, sir. I can ask you to conclude, please. Go ahead, if you want to finish that sentence, go ahead. Thank you. I know it's tough with one minute. We appreciate that. Richard Lee, and if we could just direct speakers' attention to the timer there, that will help you budget the time. Richard Lee is next, and then Sharon Caples, please. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Okay, basically, I've been in the swap meet for 14 years. It's been a lucrative business, and my idea is that you're replacing, or they're attempting to replace, 400, 300 to 400 vendors that have businesses with 400 or 450 apartments for new families. I'm not quite sure how that weighs out, but I think it affects us a lot more than it would affect the possible renters in this unit that it's proposed. I've got two grown children that have just started a business over, a little over a year ago, and their future is at risk also, along with every other vendor in this project. And that's about it. Just hope that you take that into consideration. There's a big human element to this, rather than the, the not measuring the amount of people that it's going to take to fill those apartments at what risk to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sharon Caples, also in Van Nuys.
Good morning. I'd like to say I've been a vendor there for eight years, and this has become a substantial part of my income for me and my daughter. I think I can speak on a lot of vendors' parts. We're there to make a living. We're not there to socialize, and by this taking place and hindering our income, it would cause substantial loss on a lot of people's livelihoods. And also, a lot of people rely on coming to the indoor Valley Swap Meet for a lot of reasons, not to mention good deals, but also the element that they're dealing with small businesses versus the big corporations that are out there. And we ask that you please take that in consideration, because there's not many small businesses left in Los Angeles. It's been taken over by corporations. And I'd also like to add, I do live in that area, and the congestion is overwhelming on DeSoto, Van Owen, and Victory at all hours of the day.
Thank you very much. We thank all of the folks that are in Van Nuys, and we appreciate using the remote facility and your patience during the presentations this morning. Here in Council Chambers, August Storer is our next, August Storer, and then Gordon Merley.
Good morning, Councilmembers. August Storer from the Woodland Hills Warner Center Neighborhood Council. The Neighborhood Council was not involved in this process and is distressed by that fact, even though the interim regulations require that. There's many things that I could point out wrong with this project, but the issue is whether the, the indirect issue is whether or not the interim specific plan regulations can protect the community while the specific plan is in revision. The procedures that have gone forth here have left the community out of the decision-making. We've discovered that we cannot rely on the Department of Housing to know that there's, have an affordability component to enforce. We cannot rely on the Department of Transportation to do traffic mitigation without hampering and diminishing the pedestrian traffic component. We cannot rely on planning to inform the Neighborhood Council or the community or issue having a hearing. So, the community has been let down by these interim procedures, and we can only ask that you do an ICO.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Gordon Merley, nice to see you.
Good morning, Mr. Garcetti, Council President, and Councilmembers. This is a specific plan area which has fallen through a crack that shouldn't have happened with the public not knowing what was going on until an appeal was filed over this. So, we would hope that you, as members with your own specific plans, would listen to what the community's concerns are, and this coming before you should have been a mixed-use project, but somehow it didn't happen. The whole specific plan was supposed to produce job-housing balance, and this is not doing this. So, we would ask that you listen very carefully to what the city attorney and what Councilman Zine are going to ask you to do, because it will be in the best interest of every council district if this does correct what has been a problem consistently within it. So, please, listen carefully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ron Sims is our next speaker, and then Ben Resnick.
Mr. Sims does not wish to speak, Mr. President.
Mr. Resnick.
Ben Resnick with Jeffrey Mangles, Butler &amp; Marmaro, and I have obviously a different speech at this point. We're very pleased to indicate that we've accepted a proposed compromise and settlement on the issues that were pending. As you know, we had some significant issues, but we do want to take the opportunity to thank the planning staff. They have worked extremely hard on this project, and I know that the Councilmember Zine and the members of the Plum Committee took this matter very, very seriously. We were not ignored. We were listened to. We debated. We talked. It was very civil. And the point is, we have a compromise. It's, not everyone's happy, maybe, but it is a compromise. There will be affordable housing, and there will be trip fee paid. That is all part of this arrangement. So, with that, thank you. We support the amended motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick, Zuma?
Yeah.
We have two cards for number 10. Is that a mistake?
I just wanted to change it to four, because I had general public comment, then I put it to four.
Okay, got you.
Once again, Zuma Dogg, I'm the one that says we're building way too many high-density condos around not enough infrastructure, like the ones in Valley Village with not enough sewage, narrow roads, and there's too much high density. However, this one, from my understanding, is workforce housing for the Warner Center area, and I think we need to get the city in the habit of building affordable housing for workers. It's going to be low income. It's going to be for the workers who serve the Warner Center. And I also have told that there's going to be infrastructure changes, because I was first going to speak out against this, but I looked into it, and I went to the planning commission person, and I said, "Well, gee, I'm against these because of the narrow roads, not enough sewage, and all this." He said, "There's going to be road widenings. There's going to be sewage improvements." So, if the improvements I've been talking about will be made, then Zuma Dogg, for once, can say he supports the condo construction in the area because the infrastructures will be upgraded. It will be providing the low-income housing for the workpeople, and the city needs to get into the habit of that. Thank you, whoever is it. Whose motion is this? Whose is it?
Thank you. I don't know. But thank you very much, Mr. Dogg. Mr. Zine is our first speaker on the council on this issue. I'd like to recognize him at this time for...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. This particular parcel of property, I asked my colleagues here on council, have any of you visited Warner Center in the last six months? Have any of you visited the site that we are discussing in the last six months? Have any of you visited that area in the last couple of years? Wendy Gruel, I'm asking if any of you have visited this particular location, this site. The concern I have, and I have personal knowledge of this site, because it's close to my residence, and I pass... and I pass by it back and forth when I'm commuting in the valley, because I live in the western part of the valley, and this is in the Warner Center area. This particular parcel of land is occupied by an indoor swap meet, which has been there for many years. Warner Center has a specific plan which states that by 2010, there should be 3,000 residential units. And the population has grown, and they are just shy of the 3,000 units, and we heard Wednesday, another project, Mr. Weintraub's project, which takes us barely, nearly to the 3,000 limit. This will take us partially over that 3,000 limit. Now, what the forecasters thought in the specific plan is that by 2010 would be at that number. We know that we are at that number, and this is 2007. So what I did is put an interim control, not an ordinance, but a procedure in place, and I was directed and instructed and encouraged by the planning department. I now regret what the planning department told me, is that it should be a procedure instead of an ordinance. But I went along with what the recommendation was. That gives us the ability, and this council supported it, to mitigate while we do a specific plan update in that particular region of my district in Warner Center. Warner Center was designed to be balanced jobs and housing, designed to let the people who work there live there at an affordable rate. Now, we have other areas of the city where the rents, the costs of condos are prohibitive for the people that work. The people that work in the restaurants, the people that work as sales associates at the malls, the costs are too high, and they can't afford to live there. Warner Center was designed to be affordable and to have those job-housing balance. So what happens now with this particular parcel of land is, the neighborhood council, I understand, was notified. The neighborhood council was notified by the planning department of the particular project. Now, if there's someone from the planning department here, I'd like them to come forward to acknowledge that, as I was told by the city attorney's office, they were notified. The issue of notification is important, because I've made it a policy that no development moves forward until the neighborhood council has first review. So I'd like to find out, number one, is, was notification made to the neighborhood council, which would be the Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council in this particular?
Tom Glick, City Planning Department. Yes, they were.
And the requirement that we have is that they be notified?
Yes.
The procedure after that, is there a requirement that the developer meet with the neighborhood council? Does the neighborhood council have to conduct a meeting, or is it just, we notify out of courtesy and do what we want to do?
Exactly. Early notification was all the requirement the council gave us in the instructions on December 21, 2005.
So notification was made, and no action, according to the testimony, was done by the neighborhood council in this particular project?
Not that I know of.
Okay, because I was under the impression that, actually not the impression, but the policy in the office has always been, it goes to neighborhood council before it comes to me.
Well, let me speak to that. We do recommend to all applicants that come to us at the initial process, we do recommend that they go to the neighborhood council. We let them know that it's the Woodland Hills Warner Center Neighborhood Council. We give them the contact, and it's up to them to contact them.
Okay, now, my next question is, do we know if they contacted the Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council? If the Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council had any ability to bring them in for a hearing?
I have no idea. Mr. Resnick might be able to speak to that.
Okay. Mr. Resnick, if I can ask that question, was this ever brought to the Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council? It was never brought to the Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council. So the person who was developing, the Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council was notified, the developer didn't go to the Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council, that was bypassed by the developer not going to the neighborhood council?
Yes.
Do we have any jurisdiction over that? Do we have any ability to force them to go to the neighborhood council if they don't wish to do so?
Not that I know of.
Okay. So that issue, August brought up about the Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council, we don't have the ability to compel them to do that, which is a sad situation, because most of the developers, I understand, do that. The issue at stake now, I understand that the 25% is what we proposed while we're doing this update on the specific plan, the 25% workforce housing be part of any project over the 3,000 number. This particular project, 200 and some units fall under 3,000, and 200 and some units fall above the 3,000. So it's split, because the other project we approved on Wednesday took us almost to 3,000, but we're a couple hundred shy. So this project really goes over the threshold, it's back and forth under that. What I understand that has been worked out with the planning department, city attorney's office, and the developer, is that they will agree to a 20% affordability in that project with the units that would be over the threshold of 3,000. And I don't have a specific number, it's 200 and something that would fall under that 20%. Is that numbers you have?
210.
210. Would fall under the 20%. Now, originally, the ordinance said, or the procedure said 25%. Can you tell me why we're dropping from 25% to 20%?
For the entire amount? Or just for the...
No. Remember, when we talk about the cap, the 3,000 cap, 200 and some of these units are under the 3,000 cap?
Yes.
And then there's units above the 3,000 cap. Now, we said anything over 3,000 cap would be required to do 25%.
Actually, our initial interpretation in the planning department was any project that took, any single project that took us over 3,000, the whole project was subject to the entire 25% requirement.
Okay.
It was subject to interpretation, whether we were correct or not. It's a policy issue, ultimately. That was our policy.
And I understand that there were some issues with the traffic study to try and justify what was required under the procedure, and in this particular case, there was some negotiation between the city and the developer that they would agree to a 20% of the units over the 3,000 threshold.
Yes.
So what we have, Jerry, could you come up and join the city attorney's office? My option would be, if I had an option, would be to maintain this as a commercial or an industrial site, because this area is already congested, it's going to be more congested. I know there's traffic mitigation that's going to take place, there's more development that wants to take place, and I don't want to turn Warner Center into a total residential community without the jobs, without the business, other than the shopping center. We have commercial, we have industrial, I want to maintain that. But I understand property owners' rights, that they have certain rights and privileges also. And I understand that the arrangement that's been worked out, the parties have come together to say, "We will agree to this 20% over the 3,000 number," and the developer, the property owner, would then have that opportunity to do as he wished to do. I also want to put on the record that I've been told by informed sources that this is not about this particular property owner developing this project, but that this particular property owner is going to sell this project, and someone else will develop the project. That is a right to do under the laws, and we can't restrict that, we can't prohibit that. My impact on the community, and the reason why I put the stop at the 3,000 number, was to make sure that we have a balance, so we don't lose all of the space to residential, so we have the jobs, so people can walk to work, people can take the jitney which are going to establish in Warner Center. And Brad Rosenheim from Warner Center Associates is aware of that project. We have other representatives here from the apartment complexes that have been built in there. Basically, everything under 3,000, there's a free rein to do as they wish. Over 3,000, the restrictions are now in place. So the agreement that's been worked out from the city attorney's office, the planning department with the developer, I want to make sure that we are on solid ground, and I will tell you that I have never in my entire time here of six years seen a small project, and this is a small project in the scope of the city of Los Angeles. The lobbying effort that's taken place is outrageous in this particular project. Every single council office has been lobbied to the point that this must be like a master project for the city of Los Angeles. This is a very small project. But the issue at stake is, are we on solid ground if we agree to this? And going against what the grain is, turning the commercial into this agreement to do residential? And any future projects, there is no question that we're going to be over 3,000, and they will must comply with the 25% that we have in the procedure. And if I need to change that procedure into an ordinance, whatever we need to do, because I don't want to see this overloaded population without the component that we want to have a job-housing balance. And the associates at Macy's and Nordstrom are not making sufficient dollars to rent the apartments that are currently established in Warner Center. The rents are too high for the people who are working there. Can you comment on that, please?
Peter Gutierrez, Senior Assistant City Attorney. The interim regulations are designed to, in large part, mitigate traffic impacts for those, for that construction above the 3,000 residential units. We believe that this 20% set aside, combined with some other traffic mitigation measures that are being proposed by the Department of Transportation, meet the appropriate test that is, that it is designed to mitigate impacts from this specific project. And so in terms of being on solid ground, we believe that the 20% set aside, combined with the other mitigation measures that DOT has suggested, will do that. It will, and it will meet the intent of the interim regulation.
And the issue regarding the transportation study, where that study was balanced with the mitigation, balanced with the jobs housing, where you can walk to work, take the jitney, et cetera, there were some problems, I understand, with the transportation department study, and that's one of the reasons why we're going to agree to this settled offer?
I think DOT can respond to that.
Good afternoon. Jay Kim from Department of Transportation. Yes, the first analysis did overlook the potential of...
Wait, say that again?
The first analysis that was conducted did not take into account the benefits of having workforce housing. Generally, because they're lower income, they do generate less traffic. That particular component of the trip reduction-making behavior, if you will, of workforce housing was not taken into account. In the subsequent analysis, we did look into that issue, and income does play a role in reducing trips. We estimate as much as a 20% reduction when you compare a low, mid-income versus a high mid-income. And so we then applied that reduction, and basically, in essence, it reduces the project applicant's fee structure, as well as the physical mitigations that he would normally have to do. So it had an impact, and it's, if you, one way to look at it is perhaps, rather than putting forward a physical mitigation package of certain size, this would be an early intervention to actually reduce the trips. So it's a strategy. It's a difference between reducing trips and providing perhaps less physical mitigations versus doing a bigger physical mitigation package.
And one of the components, I understand, in this agreement is that the radius where we withdraw from the workers within Warner Center is a three-mile radius. So the people working within Warner Center, which there's 20-some thousand jobs currently in Warner Center, the people from that area would have an opportunity within that three-mile radius to have the affordability in this particular project.
That is another component that we've looked into in our initial analysis. However, what we were sort of, what we've discovered along the way is that, because there wasn't anything that would make it enforceable, and if somebody came and got this particular unit, and they start off working at Warner Center, and if over time, if that person left that job, there wasn't any kind of guarantee that assured that, then the city would sort of replace that with another person who would be working at the Warner Center. And because that guarantee was not anywhere clearly stated, we actually backed off of that additional credit, because that would have been an additive reduction on top of the income effect. So it would have been an income reduction plus sort of the proximity of living and working in an environment. But we elected not to take that credit because the guarantees were not in place. So actually, this is kind of a very conservative approach. But you are correct, there's actually two elements, and we've sort of taken the conservative approach.
And in the future developments that are proposed in Warner Center, and I want to make it very clear on the record, they'd be required to do any and all traffic mitigation, as well as the affordability in any and all components that may be proposed for Warner Center.
I guess we would do whatever the policy decisions are made. If it's, say, 25% set aside for workforce, we would then analyze the traffic study with that trip reduction in place to count for the 25% of workforce housing. And so we would do our analysis accordingly. And again, you know, that's a policy decision where that percentage ends up, but we will make the necessary adjustments.
And with the specific plan update, do we have any timeframe when that's expected to come forward for first review? And I want to commit to the neighborhood councils that they will have the review process. Also, I'm going to be establishing a task force for traffic mitigation with the affected neighborhood councils, the affected communities of West Hills, Woodland Hills, and Canoga Park, which are going to immediately be impacted by that through the neighborhood councils, through the chambers, through the homeowners associations, a task force that we will put together to make sure that we don't end up with gridlock within that region of the west San Fernando Valley. Whatever transportation department says, I want the people who live there and work there to have a say on what we're going to do to make sure we don't end up with gridlock as we've seen in many parts of the city of Los Angeles. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay. Tom Glick, City Planning. We are in the process of starting the restudy. We've actually been working with the Citizens Advisory Committee that was appointed by council a year ago. The planning department has been working with them on updating and kind of coming up with a white paper. Separately, the planning department has also started working with the consultants, the transportation and environmental consultants, on the traffic and environmental analysis of the revised specific plan. We anticipate a preliminary plan or a draft to the CAC sometime in early 2008, probably in January 2008, so we can have some concrete, new specific plan out there for review.
But that will be set for review before it gets implemented, before that specific plan takes effect?
Yes.
And there'll be thorough interview, a review, I should say, to make sure that we have all areas covered. But between now and then, between now and that time that that plan is approved by this body, anyone who wishes to develop in Warner Center is going to have to go through the neighborhood council, as well as make sure that they have the 25% workforce housing, which is not Section 8 housing. What this is, is workforce housing, people who work there can live there, and the components that we put together in that procedure. If not, then I will draft an ordinance if we can't enforce the procedure, to make sure we've got ground cover for the people who live there currently in Warner Center.
I will assure you that every future project we get in Warner Center, whether it's a small little residential project, or a small addition to a commercial project, we will require them to go to the neighborhood council.
And I found the neighborhood council is very beneficial, and I'm sad that in this particular case, the project did not go to neighborhood council. I was assuming until now, when August spoke, that it had not gone there. I thought it had gone through that review. Again, I believe this compromise has been worked out with the landowner, I'll say not the developer, the landowner, because as I understand, this is going to be built by someone else, is a compromise with all the departments accepting it, with the landowner accepting it, and I'm reluctantly accepting it. If it was my option, it would be denied, and we would maintain the commercial and the industrial in that particular area and not go forward with this. I don't have that option to do, but that would be my wish if I had that opportunity. From the city attorney's office, we have anything else?
Nothing further.
So with that in mind, colleagues, I know that everybody has other activities to do. I would ask that we support this, we approve this, and we move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And just to add, I know the specific plan, as Tom knows, affects my district, that a couple of the specific plans, not the Warner Center one, but the Ventura Boulevard, we've been asking, as we go through those community plans, and the intersection between traffic and planning is a key issue that I know we want to see as well. So thank you for your leadership on that, Mr. Zine. The item is now before us. Madam Clerk, with you, is there's an amending motion that was submitted, correct, Mr. Zine?
To the project owner, everybody's on the same page for that.
Great. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 11 ayes.
Thank you.
That item's been approved. Thank you very much. Next item, Madam Clerk.
And next item, Madam President, is item number nine, and that was called specially by Councilmember Perry, and there are cards on that item. I'm sorry, item number 12.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, number nine, I think we passed.
No, I think we did.
Item number 12.
I think...
Ms. Perry.
Okay. Thank you, and I'm standing also in support of Mr. Cardenas' motion. This is involving Figaro Plaza, where many city departments are already located, and this is an opportunity for the city to exercise its right of first refusal. I think the city should afford itself the opportunity to review whether to purchase Figaro Plaza, and I hope today that we, direct General Services, to send a letter to the seller indicating that the city is indicating, is considering exercising its right of first refusal for the purchase of the property, and we would like to enter into a due diligence period to examine that. It may turn out that such a purchase will give the opportunity for the city to save money in the long run, but I think it would be a dereliction of our duties, fiscal responsibility, not to investigate whether to purchase at this time, because it will become available to other bidders, and we will have missed our opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Today's discussion isn't about purchasing a building. Today's discussion is about the fact that we are tenants in this facility, and this particular owner has decided to put the property on the market. But in our contract, we have what they call first right of refusal, which means that they cannot sell it to anyone else until we either affirm that we are interested in buying it, or at least looking into it, or we can say, "No, we'll pass." So today's discussion, and item on the agenda 12, has to do with giving our staff the authority, subject to the signature of the mayor, in concurrence with the council if this moves forward, to give them the authority to spend as much as $95,000 to look into what they call due diligence, to find out... call due diligence, to find out if we are going to actually do the next step in the next 60 days. But here, we're giving our staff 45 days, so we have enough time to concur with the council, the mayor, if we want to exercise that. We'll give ourselves another 45 days to decide whether or not we're going to go ahead and open up escrow and actually purchase this building. And the building is in excess of 600,000 square feet. It is two component, it's actually two buildings. One was built in 1986, another one in 1991. Although that might sound like they're brand-new buildings, they are not. One of them is 20 years old, another one is 15 years old. So I just wanted to give you some examples of how complicated this investigation is in order for us to not be derelict or delinquent in making a rash decision. So we have as much as 60 days moving forward. And what I'd like to ask my colleagues is that we give the staff and our policy committees and the mayor's staff and everyone an opportunity to look into whether or not we're going to actually take the next step down the road of purchasing this building, that we occupy close to 300,000 square feet of today, and it is over 600,000 square feet total. So with that, my recommendation is that we pass item 12.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the queue? We do have one speaker card. I didn't forget Candido. Candido Maraz, I didn't know if we had, this had been a public hearing or not. Candido.
Thank you, Madam President, for your kindness there. Again, I stand in support of this, but again, I question, why didn't we buy this in 2004? Some of the issues that were brought up then were the first refusal, right of refusal, that we had a gun to our head, that we were basically being forced into this deal, that there were safety issues, that we wanted a full-fledged guarantee from the seller, on and on. These are the same issues. Have these questions been answered? We're talking 219 million now? Back then, it was 125 million. Those are questions that need to be answered. We had 52% occupancy in that building back then. The 48% were paying, would have paid for the lease. Mr. Parks and others, Ms. Smith and Ms. Minkowski, you argued that we needed to buy this building at that time. Again, a dereliction of duty. Again, I support it. We can't let this go by, but there's a lot of questions, and we're going to be looking at this very, very closely. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Candido. This item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Yes. Ms... Item 23.
Yeah, there's no objection.
We'll take item number 23. Madam Clerk.
And that was called special for cards from the public.
Yeah, forthwith.
We have two cards, Arnold Sachs, followed by Zuma Dog.
Aye.
Colleagues, we're on item number 23.
Could you please set my time again, ma'am? Thank you. Recently, questions of impropriety have been arisen regarding a donation from Philip Morris to the LAPD. Yet here, you have payment for traffic mitigation service from the entities representing the L.A. Dodgers? What are entities? Is that from a Star Trek? Is that from a Star Trek dialogue? Just so you know, this is an article from the Sunday Times from July 9, 2006. It was regarding a lawsuit from Chi versus Fox BSBB Hold Co. Incorporated, doing business as L.A. Dodgers. I think the City of L.A., the people have the right to know who these entities are. That would be this entity. Just for record, that would be Fox BSBB Hold Co. Incorporated, doing business as L.A. Dodgers. Thank you very much.
Zuma Dog?
Yeah.
Item 23.
Yeah, I was confused. Yeah, the Dodger Stadium, boy, we all saw the pictures there. First of all, these traffic problems are quite typical as to the problems we're having all over the city with too many people trying to go to the same place. But a few things I would do, first of all, I would have signage, put some signage closer to the stadium itself to help people, you know, be more aware and get ready for it, possibly signal timing the same day, the day of the event, you know, change the traffic signals, get them green lights going, boom, 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 in this way. Then on the way out, you have the traffic cops, get some traffic control officers, boom, encourage the outgoing, go in the outgoing lanes this way, you know, get the traffic lights. And also, we got too much problems with the side traffic, prohibit street traffic coming off of the sides because then it dumps out. So we want to get everybody moving in the same direction, coming in with the signals. Then you change those signals, get everybody going out the same direction. You have traffic cops going like this, you put more signage, and you don't let them go out of the side streets. Zuma Dog, I'll be running for mayor, and these are the types of things I'll make sure happens. So you get out of Dodger Stadium, you get back to your families a lot quicker, y'all. Hooty-hoo!
Thank you. That closes public comment. Mr. Labanche.
Members, I think it's a thoughtful motion, and I'd like to ask if anyone else is on the queue to speak, that we go forward with this, and if there's a problem, I know, speaking with the council members in the adjacent area, they're very focused on this, to deal with the challenge that affect this area. We should support it for the goodness of everybody, but watch it closely. And thank you, Jimmy Price is here. His people are being supported to come and help by being paid for by the Los Angeles Dodgers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Just on item number 12, I know that they'd like it to go forthwith on item number 12. Next item, I believe, would be item number 19.
And that was called special for cards.
Mr. Zuma Dog.
The number?
19. Special events.
Yes, special events. I figure since we paid the money for it, we may as well get our money worth and have some people attend these things. So coming up, we got the 16th Annual Cinco de Mayo Festival, and I think we can all figure out what that is. That's on May 3, y'all. Richard Alarcon, Janice Hahn, they got the annual Spring Carnival. They might have lost the Valley Fest, but we got the Spring Carnival. That's this weekend! Oh, yeah, too bad it's raining, but go to the Spring Carnival. That's the 20th through the 22nd, all this weekend. We got the, let's see, let's skip through some of the other things here right now. We got, by the way, coming up, we have, let's see, oh, we got the first annual Palms Community Festival, April 28. We got on April 29, the 5K Run Walk. That's in Weiss and Zine's motion. And let's see, we got the Build Bridges Walkathon, April, that's Saturday. Saturday, the 4/29 Walk and the Build Bridges Walkathon, you got to go to that because we're already paying for $44,000. That's costing $44,000. I hope you go to that. We got to get the money's worth, y'all. And I'd say February 24, there's something on here about... All right, we got the Spring Festival, April 22. There's all kinds of amendments. We got all kinds of things going on in the city, and we're paying for them, $44,000 for this, $1,000 for that. Get your money's worth. And community participation as well, we need it. And I'd like to say, when you make people wait three hours, you had a lot of people that were here to give presentations. I heard some guy go, oh, I could care less at this point. And he was here at a council member's request to present a project, let alone all the other speakers. So could we please take care of city business first before you bring out the Friday Waste Parade and waste everybody's time? Thank you.
Thank you. That public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 24, called special for cards from the public.
Mr. Zuma Dog, you have one minute left.
All right, one minute, I wasted it. This is the most important one. We got item number 24, and that's to prevent the demolition of residential hotels. Zuma Dog has two words for that. Hell, yeah! You got to eliminate the demolition of residential hotels because SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, is imposing all kinds of restrictions to build more housing. And I understand that we've got a lot of vacant apartments and housing in the city anyway. But these residential hotels are important because for people, this is a transient city, lots of short-term things. People come in here for jobs on a short-term basis. I think we need, please do not demolish any residency in the city, okay? We're trying to build more residency, so don't demolish good residency. And these hotels are good when Zuma Dog, the first six months of Zuma Dog at City Hall happened to live in one of these as well. And so I would say vote yes on no to demolition. Thank you, Zuma Dog. I'll be running for mayor in '09 and will probably easily win. I can't even help myself. It'll be me against Alarcon. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And Mr. Zuma Dog, you had submitted a card on item 26, but since you have exceeded the amount of time, we could call items number 24 and number 26 at this point. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, I'm going fast. Item 24 and 26. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Those items have been approved. We do have item 25, I acknowledge Mr. Garcetti, and we do have some speaker cards.
Okay, go ahead. Why don't we move to public speaker cards first?
Public house, okay. So I'd like to call up Seela Berman, Jim Stewart, Miguel Luna, and Glenn Daig.
Madam Chair and all city council members, my name is Seela Berman, Executive Director of the Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust. Glad to be here this morning. We were on the, we're part of Green L.A., which has, which made a lot of these recommendations, and also part of the Urban Parks Group. And what I really wanted to talk about, although we support the whole measure that's coming before you, I wanted to talk about numbers two and three under parks, how important that is, that in, under Prop 40 and Prop 12, that the money did not get to the areas that needed it the most, and the areas that had the most poverty. And so having that in there as a requisite, that we make sure that that's a requirement, is critical. The second thing is, again, under Prop 40, under Prop 12, small parks did not get done. There were no small parks that were done under those measures. And as you all know, in these very dense urban areas, that there is not the land to do the large parks, and we have to do the small parks. So this is critical, that there be state money available to do these small parks. So I want to support this wholeheartedly and thank all the council members for moving this forward.
Thank you. Jim Stewart, you all want to add anything? Jim, Miguel, Glenn?
Hi, Jim Stewart, Executive Director of People for Parks. And of course, we're supporting this, and we really appreciate Councilmember Garcetti bringing this to the council, and that we look forward to working with the city staff in terms of lobbying in Sacramento to get AB 31 to have this kind of language that will support community parks and joint use of schools and community gardens. Thank you very much.
Miguel.
Yes, good morning. My name is Miguel Luna, Executive Director of Urban Semillas, which means urban seeds. We are a social, conscientious, reconnaissance, and outreach, community-based, watershed-driven organization, representing underserved communities throughout Los Angeles. And I'm just here to thank you, Council President, for introducing this resolution. The constituency that I represent fully supports this resolution, and this is just a wonderful way to have multifunctional projects such as parks yield multiple benefits for the communities that much deserves it. Hearing here some of the issues of crime, we think that parks is a huge tool and mechanism to take a proactive action towards preventing future crime. So thank you very much, and I'd just like to point out that for those doubters of climate change, to see Santa Claus in council chambers in mid-April, climate change is here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you okay, Glenn? Okay. Thank you very much. That closes public comment. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, and a penguin as well. So I mean, we've got both Santa Claus and a penguin coming here to not specifically speak about climate change, but it is good evidence. I want to thank our friends from the environmental community, the environmental justice community, and the parks building community that were here. You probably didn't know, you're going to be waiting three and a half hours, but we do appreciate your patience and your continued advocacy on behalf of getting parks to all parts of the city. And it was mentioned before, and I'll just say it quickly as an aside, some of the presentations we do, they are very important. We have students who've come for the first time. It's their seminal experience being here at City Hall, and I know some of the presentations continue to dominate for a couple hours, but I do think there is a real place for civic pride here in Los Angeles. Anyways, last February, colleagues, many of us visited Sacramento in an effort to ensure that infrastructure bonds that reflected the city would be passed, and that would give Los Angeles its fair share in transportation, in water, in schools, but also in parks. And I think out of the trip came a lot of excitement about the work that Los Angeles is doing. Legislators were excited to hear about Proposition O, which with Councilwoman Perry, we were able to get done, and innovative water quality products, sorry, projects that we've been able to do throughout the city with innovative water quality products. But nevertheless, we are one of the only big cities in America to be in compliance right now with all of our clean water requirements. They're also excited to hear about the Los Angeles River and what Mr. Reyes was doing, and the Emerald Necklace of rivers along that, both small and big. In fact, this afternoon is when Taylor Yard will be having its opening alongside the Los Angeles River near San Fernando Road, and that is a real great accomplishment of Mr. Reyes as well. And they're also sympathetic when we highlighted the extreme lack of accessibility to open space in Los Angeles. So today, we're taking another concrete step, hopefully, in ensuring that Los Angeles gets its fair share of parks funds. Proposition 84 passed with tremendous support and a tremendous vote from Los Angeles. $5.4 billion passed to protect the quality of our water, encourage urban greening, and parkways in our streets, and create parks in areas where they simply aren't seen. The sorts of projects that People for Parks, Trust for Public Lands Project, as well as the Neighborhood Land Trust, and a lot of community groups are increasingly doing, as well as the Community Garden Council as well. And today's action will take an official position that will let legislators in Sacramento have a firm idea of what the city expects of them. When we talked with Daryl Steinberg, who really, though he represents Sacramento, has a lot of love for Los Angeles, we talked about some of these smaller parks, we talked about the idea of the giant cap parks over freeways that we're looking at. He agreed in the implementing language of the Prop 84, ballot proposition, to ensure that Los Angeles is well represented. And so we give our friends in Sacramento, whether it's Kevin DeLeón, who's doing some of the work on the assembly side, or Daryl Steinberg, who I mentioned, innovative ideas that we have here. I truly believe Los Angeles is leading a new sort of parks revolution, and it was great to hear the mayor talk about 35 new parks in the next five years. Glenn Daig, when he worked for CD 13 and other people on my staff, we've managed to, we'll open our 18th new park, and we only had 13 when we started. That's 31 parks where only 13 existed a few years ago. That sort of thing, what Ms. Perry has done to bring the wetlands to South Los Angeles, the innovative dual-use projects, really are ensuring that the dollars from Prop 84 go to the people that voted for it and the people who need it most. So thank you for your advocacy and your support, and I look forward to going back to Sacramento to make sure we bring home that fair share of parks funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you for those of you that were here for the three hours and plus to support this motion that's before us. Seeing no other speakers on the queue?
And Madam President, just for council's information, there is a substitute motion that was introduced to adopt in lieu of the original.
Thank you. Well, have the substitute motion before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Tuesday, April 24, to arrive at 11:45 for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Perry will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. We have any announcements today, colleagues? Announcements? Do we have any? Oh, yes, Mr. Labanche.
Yeah, it's a lot of activities this week with Earth Day, and members of the community throughout, there's many, many, many programs. So get out with this nice little rain we're having today and get in contact with Mother Earth.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to announce our Environmental Services Fair will be held tomorrow in Vermont Square, in front of the Vermont Square Library on Budlong and 47th. And we have this in the 9th District on an annual basis. Start off in the morning with a cleanup, beginning at 8:30, and then at 11:00 a.m. until about 2:00 in the afternoon, the fair starts. The fair will have entertainment, will have food. We always have a lot of things for little kids to do. Come rain or come shine, we will have the fair. Last year, we served 2,000 hot dogs. I expect to serve as much this year. But please, come one, come all. But please, come one, come all.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Zine.
Ms. Hahn.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hahn.
Ladies first.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody, tomorrow morning at the Bonaventure in downtown Los Angeles, starting at 8:30 a.m., is the Annual Congress of Neighborhoods, where the gathering of neighborhood councils from all over the city will come to learn from each other, network, and find out how to be more empowered in the city of Los Angeles. Also, this weekend, down in the Harbor area, as part of the Port of Los Angeles Centennial Celebration, we'll be having Rail Fest, 10 to 4, all day Saturday, but I think even Friday night, the exhibit begins, and we'll have some historic locomotives down there on, right there by Porzakall, along Harbor Boulevard. Come on down. It's, it will be a very fascinating thing for families. Bring your kids on down and see those historic locomotives.
Rail Fest, like Lobster Fest, where you give away lobster? Because I love Lobster Fest down in that neck of the woods.
That's, that's coming in September, Dennis.
Dennis is going to be there. Is that Saturday or Sunday, or both days?
Rail Fest is Saturday, all day, 10 to 4, but I believe also Friday night, there is an exhibit as well, so come on down.
Great, thank you. Before Mr. Zine, I'm going to let Mr. Garcetti just a quick announcement, then we'll come to you, Mr. Zine.
Oh, okay. Mr. Garcetti. Well, you already talked about the Dunn Congress, okay. A couple other events in Atwater Village, it'll be turned into Art Water Village this Saturday, a great art festival in Atwater Village Saturday afternoon there on Glendale Boulevard. We invite folks to come down and be a part of it. It should be a wonderful event. Also, the Armenian community in Mr. Zine's area, the AGBU, will be having a genocide remembrance event at the AGBU School at 6644 Oakdale Avenue. That is on Saturday evening from about 6:00 to 9:00. Over 1,000 people are expected there to commemorate what happened during the genocide. Also, I know that our colleague, Mr. Alarcon, will be sworn in this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. We're looking forward to his community swearing in. That's also going to be in his district at the Mend Center at San Fernando Road in Pacoima at 11:00. Lastly, for members of the Silver Lake community, we're having a reservoir meeting, Mr. Labanche and I, about the continuation of opening up the, the walk path around and jogging path to keep people safer around the reservoir in Silver Lake. And finally, Herman Landry's birthday is today. All right, Herman Landry. So we want to wish him a very, very happy birthday. Our great Sergeant-at-Arms, our longtime Sergeant-at-Arms here. Would you what?
Want to show him.
And happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Herman. Happy birthday to you. Thirty-five. Thirty-five. Is that yours of service or your age?
Mr. Zine and then Mr. Labanche.
Okay, thank you. A couple items that I wanted to note. Home Show, and I want to acknowledge the Home Show is going to be this weekend. Neighborhood councils have booths that the Home Show is donating, free of charge, so stop by the Home Show. And if you want to get passes, contact your neighborhood council people, because I understand they have some passes for the Home Show at the L.A. Convention Center, starting at 10 o'clock Saturday this weekend. Also, on Sunday, the 15th Annual Farm Walk at Pierce College. And if you want to see a beautiful 400-acre agricultural institution, Pierce College,